At this time, we'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for December 5th, 2016. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember, or Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss. Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Woback.
Here.
Seven present, eight present.
And Philseth.
Okay. And...
Do you need a motion?
We have public speakers.
We have public speaker.
Cool. Our first item is a closed session. We actually have, and I'm sorry, I need the updated agenda, I'm sorry, I only have the older one here. Thank you. We have two closed session items. A conference with labor negotiators regarding CAO compensation, agency negotiators, Mayor Burt, Councilmember Niss, and this is regarding unrepresented employees of the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city auditor. And then we have a second closed session item, which is a conference with the city attorney regarding existing litigation of the city of Palo Alto versus the Public Employee Relations Board and International Association of Firefighters, Local 1319. And this regarding California Court of Appeal, item number H041407, on appeal from the Public Employees Relations Board. And we have one speaker, Herb Bora, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. You read into the record the description that appears for Agenda Item 1A at the bottom of Page 1 of the agenda. However, that description continues on the top of Page 2.
Correct, you're right.
And I request, as I did in my letter to you, that that second part of Agenda Item 1A is with labor negotiations, and it doesn't identify the names of representatives who you would be meeting with, who would then be negotiating with on your behalf with each of those employee organizations. I believe that's required by the Brown Act, and you have done it in every other case that you've had that type of negotiation item on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me add for the record that the continuation of Item 1A is a conference with labor negotiators, the city-appointed, city-designated representatives of the city manager and his designees, and the employee organizations, or the Fire Chiefs Association, the IAFF, Local 1319, the POA, and the PMA. And on that note, we will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Niss, second by Vice Mayor Scharf. Please vote. And that passes unanimously, 8-0. So we will now go into closed session. It's returned from two closed session items, and we have no reportable actions. So we will now move on to special orders of the day. And we have, I think it's only three resolutions we're reading tonight, correct? Okay. And we have resolutions honoring the long service of three highly valued employees of the city: Joe Saccio, Joe Teresi, and Jane Ratchee. So I'd like to start things off with Joe Saccio and Councilmember Schmidt. Would you do the honors?
Whereas Joseph Saccio has conscientiously served the citizens, city council, and city departments of Palo Alto for over 24 years. And whereas Joe spent his time at the city, working in finance, and oversaw treasury functions including banking services, cash management, investments, and debt financing. And whereas Joseph Saccio ensured that the city's nearly $500 million in cash and investments were managed carefully to safeguard the preservation of principal, sufficient liquidity, and to obtain a sound, secure rate of return. And whereas Joe worked on debt financing of numerous capital projects such as Mitchell Park, Main and Downtown libraries, the Mitchell Park Community Center, two University Avenue parking garages, the wastewater treatment facility improvements, and an underground 2.5 million gallon reservoir for emergency water demands. And whereas Joe has worked extensively on the general fund's 10-year financial forecast, projected and monitored tax revenues, and produced capital budgets. And whereas Joe has worked on a wide variety of city projects, including the airport, fiber-to-the-home, numerous infrastructure plans, labor negotiations, and he supported three blue ribbon committees. And whereas Joe has successfully managed revenue collections, the warehouses, printing and mailing, and middle office energy risk management operations. And whereas Joe Saccio created a productive, cohesive, and loyal team that, under his leadership, worked independently, creatively solved problems, and expressed their views directly and honestly. And whereas Joseph Saccio conducted his 24 years of public service with fairness, professionalism, and high standards. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation and the appreciation of the community to Joseph Saccio for 24 years of faithful and excellent service rendered to the city.
Thank you. And as is our practice on resolutions, we vote to approve that. Please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. Joe, I'll meet you up here to pass this off to you, and I think you have a few words you wanted to share.
So, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, for the words on the resolution. I thank you for the coffee we had once on talking about history. That was really great, and another life, that was one of my professions. So, and thank you, Mayor Burt, and Vice Mayor Scharf, and council members for letting me speak. So this is the first time I met the microphone without having to answer any questions. And, you know, this is really a great experience. So I've been with the council since 1992, when Councilmember Niss was one of the first members, I think, that I met on the council, along with Supervisor Semidion, and Judge Huber, and some others. But I want to say thanks to a group of people. I want to say thank you to you and prior councils for all your thoughtful deliberations and incisive questions over the years. I consider myself very fortunate to have worked in a city that is full of ideas and noteworthy projects, and all the aspirations that the city has had over the years. I want to thank the city manager, City Manager Jim Keen, for allowing someone as straightforward, sure to have opinions, and serious as myself, to express myself. I have absolutely understated those words about my opinions and things like that, as people who know me. I couldn't have performed as well without the many outstanding direct reports, who very rarely get a chance to be up here. So I really want to recognize them. I've been with them for 15 years, and I really couldn't have done my job without them. I'm going to only mention a few names. Taryn Narayan, who does a lot of the work on debt, investments, and banking. Josie Stokes and her group, who run revenue collections and answer the many questions of citizens who come in, and others, and deliver excellent customer service. Scott O'Neil, who's run the warehouse, who's also retiring with me. I guess he thought it was a good time to leave with me, and it is. And he's done a great job there. And someone who retired, Nancy Nagel, who some of you may know, who worked on sustainability for the city, and did a really great job there, and helped with labor negotiations when we did that. Of all the staff, I really want to acknowledge my boss, Lalo Perez, your CFO, whose management style has really allowed me to flourish. I'll never forget his trust in my abilities and work in all the diverse areas that Council member Schmidt mentioned a while ago. He had faith that I could do that, and give him good advice on all the different projects I've been on. And I also want to say that he reflects many of the values that I hold important, and he always believes, in the end, to do what's best for the city. So the city has been fortunate to have him as a financial guardian. My last thanks go to my wonderful wife Kathleen, and our daughter Ava, who's in the audience and who just became engaged, for their support over the years. When I get a little cranky, maybe, or whatever, when I come home, they offered a lot of solace. So finally, I just want to say that I learn, you learn about a lot of stuff in the elevators. You hear rumors and stories. And one of the things that I've heard is that the city has, there's movement afoot for the city to be a world-class organization. And throughout my years of work here, I have really, truly been impressed by the quality and the caliber of the people that I've worked with throughout the departments. There are many I may have disagreed with, but I really do respect the quality, even in the differences that we've had. And I would say to you that recognize, do recognize the noteworthy talent that already exists here as you move forward into the future with the organization that you think is best for the city. So thank you very much for the recognition, and it's been a really good time working with the city. It's been a stimulating and fulfilling career, and perhaps as a resident, I will come back and talk to you.
Yeah, I was just going to add, make that point.
And use my full three minutes. Cut us a break, Joe.
All right. Thank you. So our next resolution is in honor of Joe Teresi and Councilmember Holman. We'll be reading it.
Yes, it's my honor to do this, and just quickly, of the four that are retiring that are being recognized tonight, it represents 115 years of public service. So whereas Joe Teresi has enthusiastically served the citizens of Palo Alto for over three decades as a committed, innovative, and positive leader who has developed successful programs, served as a role model, and mentor for other staff, and fulfilled commitments to the community to enhance the city's storm drainage system. And whereas Joe, who grew up in the Midtown neighborhood of Palo Alto, joined the Public Works Department as an assistant engineer in April 1984, and worked on projects to build the Friendship Bridge over San Francisco Creek, Foothills Park Fire Station, Foothills Park Dam Seismic retrofit, Greer Park expansion, and golf course cart paths. And whereas Joe oversaw the Storm Drainage Enterprise Fund and worked with local residents to pass the successful 2005 ballot measure to fund the storm drain program through 2016, and has laid the groundwork for a follow-up ballot measure to be voted on in early 2017. He also managed the development of the Storm Drain Master Plan and the implementation of numerous storm drain capital improvement, capital improvements. And whereas Joe has represented the city of Palo Alto in regional partnerships with the city, excuse me, with Santa Clara Valley Water District, San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Program to reduce flood risk, improve storm water quality, and green the urban landscape. And whereas Joe reached out to residents, schoolchildren, and many others, enlightening and entertaining them both in and out of the Flow the Raccoon Palo Alto Storm Water Mascot costume. His dedication, wit, and wisdom touched everyone he served as he explained that storm flows can carry pollutants to the bay, and that such pollution must be prevented. And whereas Joe's career has come full circle with his recent work on projects to extend the Friendship Bridge as part of the Bay to Highway 101 Flood Protection Project, and to replace the golf cart paths with a fully reconfigured municipal golf course. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Palo Alto recognizes Joe Teresi for his tireless and enthusiastic commitment to the people of Palo Alto, and thanking for his 32 years of dedicated service on their behalf. And could I also add that Joe was, I don't remember what year it was, but Joe was also previously voted Mr. Milbrae.
Thank you. Oh, not yet, Joe. So we actually have one speaker who wishes to speak on this item, Hal Mickelson.
Thank you. I'm speaking in my capacity as the chair this year of the Citizen Oversight Committee for the Storm Drain Enterprise Fund. Joe has had to deal, among other challenges, with his very own watchdog and audit committee, with whom he was required to meet regularly so that the committee could confirm that this fund is applied in accordance with the purposes declared to voters. It has been a pleasure and a source of unending education to work with Joe. There is no member of the city's staff whose expertise is more evident, or whose expertise is more dedicated and geared to practical results for the city. There is no member of the city's staff who is more dedicated to the city's well-being. And I would venture to say there is no one in the public life of the city, whether officially or as a volunteer, or as a member of staff, whose good nature and friendliness could make it more of a pleasure to achieve the city's ends. So his committee gratefully supports this resolution.
Thank you. So please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously.
I guess I'll say a few things as well. Actually, I'd like to start just by introducing some of my special guests. My wife Sheri is here with us tonight, as well as my mom Mabel, who's a 60-year resident of Palo Alto. Also, I'm very grateful that four members of the Storm Rain Oversight Committee are here today, in addition to Hal, Stephanie McGraw, and Nancy Clark, and Dick Willey, made their time out of their busy schedules to come, and I really appreciate that very much. Thank you. As was said, I am a hometown boy. I grew up in Midtown. My mom still lives there, and that's been part of the fun of working for the city of Palo Alto, is to see, you know, how I can make changes to and make it a better place. I've been very proud to work on lots of different projects and see the results, and that's a real source of pride for me. I'd like to say thank you to some people as well, to all the folks here at the city who've been very supportive, of course, all of you members of the council, and in addition, City Manager Keen, and Assistant City Manager Ed Chikata, Mike Sardar, Brad Eggleston, Phil Bobel. You know, they've all been great as leaders that have worked with me to achieve the things that I've been able to do. I also have two staff members that work with me to implement our starting bank program, Rajiv Hada and Shari Carlet, who form part of my team. And also, I wanted to say that Michelle Jeremiahus is here, and you'll be seeing more of her as she's been selected to be my successor. So she's been working here in the city for several years, and I'm sure you'll enjoy working with her in the future. I think, really, I wanted to echo what Joe said about the quality of the staff. I'm sure all of you know this, but I think it's worth saying that, you know, we really do have a great staff here that's very engaged, and dedicated, and hardworking. Have to say, maybe of all the groups, it probably Public Works, maybe it's just, you know, a little bit on the high side of that spectrum, but, you know, everybody is a great team, but especially Public Works, you know, go team. So, again, I hope I've made a difference working here all these years, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve. And I will say that although I won't be working here after the end of the month, that, you know, I'll still be around. One of the things I really love to do is volunteer. So I plan on, one of the first things I plan to do is to come back and work as a volunteer member of the Campaign Committee to pass the Storm Drain Ballot Measure, because I have a very vested interest in the success of that particular item. So I will be back to ensure that we get the support of our community on that. I'm also very interested in history, so I think I'm going to be doing some work volunteering with Paha. And so, hope to see you around, and again, thank you so much for everything.
And our next resolution is for Jane Ratchee, Vice Mayor Scharf.
Resolution of the Council of the city of Palo Alto expressing appreciation to Jane Ratchee upon her retirement. Whereas Jane Ratchee has enthusiastically served the citizens of Palo Alto for over three decades as an innovative, compassionate, and sustainability-focused leader who has developed successful programs, fostered strategic partnerships, enhanced community assets, and achieved measurable results for climate action and sustainability goals. And whereas Jane first joined the city of Palo Alto in 1985 on a temporary one-year job assignment as an associate engineer in the Energy Services Group, was hired permanently in 1986, and served in many capacities, including her promotion to her current role as Assistant Director of Utilities Resource Management in 2007. And whereas since joining the city of Palo Alto Utilities, Jane has worked tirelessly to improve upon the ways the city manages its utility resources, always with a focus on making the city of Palo Alto a leader in environmental sustainability, energy and water efficiency, renewable energy portfolio management, and climate change initiatives. And whereas Jane has served as board member of the Bay Area Water Users Association, and a steering committee member for the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission Water Supply Master Plan. And whereas in the early 1990s, Jane completed the city's first urban water management plan, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and the city's first water integrated resources plan, analyzing all potential water resource alternatives for Palo Alto. And whereas Jane pioneered the city's implementation of a carbon neutral electric supply plan, local solar plan, long-term energy efficiency goals, 25-year water supply agreement with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, revised utilities reserve guidelines, long-term financial plans for all utility funds, updated utility strategic plan, and the utilities plan to exceed all state renewable portfolio standard goals, executing the lowest-priced solar purchase power agreement to date. And whereas Jane, whereas under Jane's leadership and guidance, the city launched numerous programs such as the Palo Alto Clean Local Energy Accessible Now Clean Feed and Tariff Solar Program, an innovation test bed program for emerging technology pilot program, the Customer Connect Advanced Metering Pilot Program, the Palo Alto Green Gas Voluntary Carbon Offset Program, and the Solar Net Energy Meeting Metering Successor Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Palo Alto recognizes Jane Ratchee for her tireless and enthusiastic commitment to the people of Palo Alto, and thank her for 31 years of dedicated services on their behalf. And I just wanted to say, Jane, I've really enjoyed working with you a lot in both NCPA and on the Utilities Advisory Commission. You've really done a great job for the city of Palo Alto, and your depth of knowledge of the intricacies of policy and all of that have really been helpful and very worthwhile to the city. And I got to say, after reading all this, I'm not sure there's anything left for us to do. So congratulations, and thanks again for your service. I really have appreciated it.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, just to add just a few words, I bump into you quite a bit in elevators and around town, and I just have always appreciated not only your expertise and your professionalism, but also how accessible you are, what a positive attitude you have, and how accessible you are to people in the community, too. I know it's more than one person who said to me, it's like, oh yeah, there was this utilities person riding around on her bicycle and stopped to see how my landscaping project was going. And, I mean, that's just real commitment, and very much appreciated.
All right. Please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously.
Well, I didn't have any prepared remarks like Joe and Joe, but I really do appreciate the opportunity to work at the city. I think it's very fun. I'm going to miss it. The people are great. The council's great. The UAC is really fun and good to work for, and force us to do good work. So I'm going to miss it. I'll miss all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. And Scott O'Neil was not able to be here tonight, but we need to vote on his resolution as well, so please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously. So... It really is a rarity that we have such a group of people retiring at the same time who have served this community for so long at such high levels in the organization and had such impacts. So I just want to say, on behalf of the entire council, thank you. All right. Moving on to our meeting. The next item is Agenda Changes, Additions, or Deletions. We do not have any. And we move on to City Manager Comments. Mr. Keen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Well, I know that felt really good. Now I feel really crummy with these guys not being on the staff anymore. I mean, there really is a, they've left a big hole in our organization, but we do wish them the very, very best, and we have a new generation of folks who I think are looking forward to the chance to try to match their accomplishments. Thank you. I know that council heard plenty about the fact that we began to receive some complaints last week, that there was an unpleasant change in the taste and odor in the city's water supply. I think, as you know, but sure our public knows, the cause of this really was that the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which is the city's water supplier, along with many other jurisdictions around the region, began blending water from the Hetch Hetchy Reservoir, which is our constant supply, with other surface reservoirs on the peninsula. And other SFPUC customers receiving this blended water will likely... And other SFPUC customers receiving this blended water will likely be experiencing the same effects that were reported in our community. A water blend change typically happens every year around this time, and the reason for that is that it is a necessary component for the, of the SFPUC's need to perform routine maintenance on the Hetch Hetchy water distribution system. So, as they sort of shut that down to do some of that work, they've got to add some additional water on a temporary basis. You know, we generally haven't had an issue with the blended water supply of late, and so did not seek to notify the community in advance that this was going to be taking place, because in recent years, we hadn't had any sort of water taste or odor. But I have asked our staff to be sure to let folks know, asked SFPUC to let us know each year in the future when this is going to take place, and we can let the public know that this is what's happening. I think it's important to remind everyone again, we continue to conduct daily water quality testing on our water supply, and it is absolutely safe and healthy. We did contact the SFPUC about why there was an unusually elevated change in the taste and odor as a result of the blended change, and they told us it was due to a higher volume of material such as sediment than normal that may have entered the system during the blending, which can cause the water to taste or smell earthy or musty. Our utility staff have flushed various areas of the city's water distribution system starting last week to try to mitigate these changes, and we're told that the effects should be resolved for most of the city by Wednesday as the water moves through our system. There is more, there are more details available on our water quality webpage at thecityofpaloalto.org/waterquality, all one word. I think Roger, you guys may have some photos for me on the installation of a gas pipeline. Joe Terese, I guess, has left the room, but this was part of Joe's work also. Last week, with Palo Alto's help, PG&E completed installation of the 2,300 feet, okay, now we're up there, okay, good, 100 feet, 2,300 feet of high-pressure 24-inch gas pipeline, which was needed to abandon the old one, which was very close to East Palo Alto homes. The new line goes along the edge of Palo Alto's golf course, which is a much safer location for the gas pipeline. The other good news is that the salty groundwater, which had to be pumped for the trench construction, was much less than originally estimated. Our staff worked with PG&E on construction methods, the treatment, this photo here, and monitoring to reduce the estimated amount from over, from over 1 million gallons to less than 50,000 gallons actually needing to be pumped. The pretreatment and discharge of Palo Alto wastewater treatment plant was also successfully completed on Friday. Further good news is that all of this was done ahead of the golf course completion, so that no future interruption of play will occur. Obviously, our course is closed, we were extremely concerned about the financial impact that this construction schedule, if it had been delayed, could have on that capital project, so that's good work. Also, some other good news coming out of, what else, the Public Works Department. Kudos to Public Works who completed the road maintenance work on Embarcadero Road a week ahead of schedule. That was maintenance and cleaning work that began on Monday, November 28, between Emerson and El Camino, was expected to take two weeks, but our crews finished it in time for the morning commute on Friday, December 2. As you recall, this was necessary to clean up and deal with a dirty and unsightly problem coming from hundreds of pigeons living in the I-beams underneath the Caltrain tracks. Due to continual maintenance and cleanup costs, the Public Works Department installed bird netting during the closure period to deter birds from roosting in the structure in the future. Now is the season, another reminder to prepare for winter storms and flooding. Staff from the city's Public Works Department and Office of Emergency Services will be hosting a sandbag day on Saturday, December 17, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, in front of the City Municipal Service Center, that's on, at 3201 East Bay Shore Road. The city's three sandbag stations are stocked for use by our residents and for storm and flood preparedness tips and storm-related web resources and phone numbers, please visit We kicked off the holiday season with the sixth annual tree lighting last weekend at Litton Plaza. The mayor was on hand to start the festivities, which included carolers and a lot of fun activities for kids and families. It was a nice way to start our holiday season. And then finally, adding to what was kind of an unpleasant weekend on a lot of levels, we had some traffic problems last Thursday in town, which, of course, I know the council heard a lot about. First off, the day started with an accident early in the morning involving a dump truck on Dunbarton Bridge, which caused a hazmat incident, caused significant traffic delays throughout the Bay Area, including Palo Alto. But later in the day, at 4:56 p.m., a truck traveling eastbound on the Dunbarton Bridge broke down, became disabled, and generated extensive traffic backup. And although the truck was moved in less than an hour, traffic congestion throughout the peninsula and Palo Alto remained heavy until 8:30 p.m. Our 24-hour dispatch center received two calls for service, and those were just reporting erratic driving behavior in the area of the afternoon backup. We also received a couple of inquiries on Twitter asking about the source of delays. I think that we got a lot of concerns about why our police department wasn't out, and looking at directing traffic. The chief and his team are doing a complete review. This is a time of day where we have typically just about six folks on shift citywide, and not making any excuses, I'll give the council a fuller report. We need to realize that attempting to direct traffic in a regional traffic jam presents some complications in our ability to be able to move traffic across different areas, but I'll give the council a full report. And we will also look to improvements that we can make in the future. Something tells me this isn't the last traffic jam that we're going to have in our region as to channels that people can tune into to obtain some of those updates, and how we might better use some different traffic applications available for smartphones and other means of communication. So, just the beginning, but I'll give the council a fuller report. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. So, we will now move on to oral communications. Our first speaker is Ken Horowitz, to be followed by Pam Warrior. Welcome.
Thank you. Ken Horowitz, I live on Homer Avenue. I'd just like to give you an update, what's going on. You've probably heard me a number of times talking about 755 Page Mill Road. It was a little over two years ago that nearly 100 citizens and myself were here telling you about the closure of the Page Mill Y. Today, I went to visit that site, Page Mill 755, and I'm sad to say that even though the owner, the manager of that particular site, is devoting some of that space, it was a 15,000-square-feet recreational center, he's converted about a third of it to offices, and the remaining two-thirds is going to be a fitness center, but it's going to be private, and it's sad to say. Which, the other part I wanted to talk about, which I think Vice Mayor Sharp talked about, and that's about PCs. You know, I like PCs, and when that particular site, which was the corner of El Camino and Page Mill Road back in the late '70s, was zoned for a planned community, and it was kind of interesting, they were given a huge amount of space there for offices and administrative offices, et cetera, but at the same time, they were also going to provide some uses to be for the public. There was supposed to be a resident, a restaurant there, and there was also supposed to be a 300-guest-room hotel at that particular site, and of course, there was the recreational center. That particular site, unfortunately, now the only thing left for a planned community is the theater. And that theater, personally, I know the council saved it for a couple of years, but that may not be something that'll be longstanding. So, the thing I get from all of that is that I think planned communities are great, but they need to have more teeth associated with them, and enforcement, et cetera, because if there was more teeth put into them and more enforcement, we'd probably have a hotel there, and I know the council talked about that last meeting, about the benefits of a hotel there. And I also think that the recreational center, which served for many, many years since 1979, would still be available to our residents. So, I thank you for your time. I haven't given up hope, Manager Keen, and maybe someday that particular recreation facility, which is a fitness center, unfortunately, the owner says that he's going to only lease it or allow the tenants of the building to use it. I hope someday that he'll change his mind and open it up to the public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Warrior, to be followed by Lynn Krug.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My maiden name is Wong, so I'm a long-term resident, actually, a former resident. I was born in Palo Alto and work in Palo Alto. I moved out to Mountain View. I work for VCA Palo Alto Animal Hospital, which is on El Camino, and like I said, I'm married to William Warrior, who is a long-term employee for the animal shelter. If you outsource the shelter, you will reduce any of the revenue for the city. Like I said, the city is, means a lot to me, and outsourcing it, and that removes the money. And this shelter, like I said, there's no reason for giving money to somewhere else, like I said, Redwood City, or to any other place. If you do this, if you retain the money, this allows the community businesses around to help out and set up, like raising money for it. Retain the money within Palo Alto, such as allowing a cat cafe, like ADAS Cafe, to have like a coffee cart over there that will help bring in money, and there is a lot of money out there for, like I said, VCA, and if you reach out to these communities, like I said, you'll retain the money and keep the money in, within Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynn Krug, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. I, like many of you, come from originally private industry, and I know the directive across the city has been amongst many managers, and I'm not sure originating from you, but to reduce headcount and contract out. I find that perplexing, because we are diversified industry. We aren't, like you or I may have come from, a single industry. So, making blanket statements or plans to contract out across the board without really thinking about what is innovative. What is innovative is not top-down management. What is innovative is building a team, building an organization, looking up from our cellphones and trying to participate to actually acknowledge that this is something our community wants and needs. It takes a lot of courage for somebody like Pam to come here. Theater and arts people are used to fundraising, we're just getting this off the ground. We fully intend to address fundraising, organizing around our organization and others to get this off the floor. So, we're here tonight to save our shelter. We're working to have the Palo Alto Animal Shelter remain a community animal shelter. We have employees who work there now who do great work. Why would we pay someone else to do that work? Why wouldn't we not support our team? Innovation comes with support and dedication. We believe we can organize and raise money through our efforts of our volunteers and building on their work, which they've now started. At this time, the volunteers have now begun a pet pantry, and we are now working towards fundraising efforts and a blind auction. We are capable of giving visibility and action with your endorsement and help. We're asking you to seriously consider not contracting out and to keep Palo Alto's animal shelter a Palo Alto community animal shelter, and acknowledge the great work of the employees who work there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Mark Molyneux.
Good evening, Mayor Burton, and Councilmembers. You know, Measure A passed, and that's a great thing. And there was a remark by a very respected person who's now, who has been elected to the council, and since she got a lot of votes, I think her, we should really pay attention to what she's saying, because I respect her, but I think she's wrong. She says, "Well, we can't expect to house everybody." Yes, we can. That's the responsibility of a civilized city, that everybody will have some kind of a shelter from criminals, from cold, and the elements in general, and someplace to perform bodily functions. I think everybody should have some kind of shelter, not necessarily a palace. And I think that we should look at what the resources are and use them very wisely. First of all, the Measure A is not the only Measure A. There's something I might call Measure A-1, and that resource is the power of this, this city council selectively to enforce ordinances, which you do all the time. You often make exceptions to the setbacks, to the height, to the this and to the that. And if you judiciously use these exceptions to make it possible for people to have their own place, I think that that will be very well done. What I mean by that is, older people, I'm one of them, do not need a family room, a dining room, a game room, they need a room like a hotel room. You can make it possible for everybody who has Social Security to live in a place with 200-square-foot rooms, and I believe that it will be acceptable. This is the new thing. I believe it will be acceptable if you have them all with a facade of a very large balcony which is gardened. And if the city were to take an interest in these gardens, like they would have the equivalent of a green wall, that would be attractive to the other people in the city. And that's, I hope that doesn't sound silly, but because it seems to me that a great deal of your housing efforts have gone toward making low-income housing look really nice, so it will blend in with high-income housing. Isn't that true? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Molyneux, to be followed by Larkin Lipides.
Hello there. My name is Mark Molyneux. I graduated from Stanford, and now I live in Redwood City. Last week, I spent Last week, I spoke several times here to the council about the nature of Prop 13 and its effects on Palo Alto, how it has led Palo Alto to, despite its best efforts, and they do try very hard, it still leads Palo Alto to contribute to pollution, and it leads Palo Alto to prevent affordable housing. Just a day after I spoke last week, the website Trulia, it produced a report. The report was called Winners and Losers From America's Legendary Taxpayer Revolt. This talked about the effects of Prop 13 almost 40 years later. It talked about overall effects. $12.5 billion go to subsidies for homeowners each year through Prop 13. It also looked at a city-by-city basis. They looked at all cities in California with the median effective property tax rate. Palo Alto was last. At 0.42%, Palo Alto pays less taxes effectively than any other city in California. That's, I found that pretty surprising. It's certainly an incredible statistic. I find it surprising because I feel it's a progressive value to support government programs and support taxes that support these government programs. I find it surprising because Palo Alto, it draws great value for its land and its homeowners from its placement in the region with its other communities. And yet, it depends upon the other communities to pay for its programs. The schools are paid through by Sacramento instead of local taxes. Even my income taxes go to pay for Palo Alto schools, and I find that surprising. And I just have to feel that Palo Alto in general has a general feeling of fairness and knows in its best interests, it really would, it would thrive by having a more fair system than the unfair system of Prop 13 we have now. And to go back to the effects in unaffordable housing in the Bay Area, I just want to draw on the fact that it is not a minor issue. Friends of mine, also Stanford graduates, have been forced out to the East Bay. And you may have heard of the Oakland warehouse fire that happened this Friday. Good friends of mine lost good friends of theirs in the warehouse fire. And no one wants to live in slumlord-run places. No one wants to live in places that aren't up to code. But people do it when places like Palo Alto are forced by systems like Prop 13 not to make affordable housing. And I think it's about time Palo Alto takes it seriously and supports reforming these systems. A repeal of Prop 13 would really be good for fairness in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our final speaker, is Larkin Lipides.
Oh, good evening. I'm Larkin, and I'm going on 10 years as a Palo Alto Animal Services volunteer. I have seen firsthand the dedication and commitment of the PAAAS staff, both to the animals who come to them and to the folks who come to adopt, to bring in an animal in need of care or shelter, or sadly, to relinquish an animal, often a sick or an older animal, that they can no longer care for, and all are taken in. Palo Alto should be proud of these folks and their service. Give them and their supporters a chance to create a plan that allows Palo Alto Animal Services to remain Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Vice Mayor Scharf, second by Councilmember DuBois. Councilmember Holman?
I believe City Attorney had some comments to make about Item 5.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Holman. Just to clarify, the attachment, the city list of filing categories for city officials is not a comprehensive list in that it includes only the local additions to the pre-existing list that's a part of state law, that includes, for example, all council members, the city manager, and myself as your city attorney, as well as the planning director and planning commissioners. So certain categories of folks are specified under state law and are requirements of state law, and this attachment is the additions that the city makes to that process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So let's vote on the board. And that passes unanimously on an eight-to-zero vote. So we now move on to our first action item, which is a Finance Committee recommendation that the council adopt a resolution approving a carbon-neutral natural gas plan to achieve a carbon-neutral gas portfolio by fiscal year 2018 with no greater than 10 cents per therm rate impact, and terminating the Palo Alto Green Gas Program. And two, provide direction to staff concerning aspects of the plan implementation. Mr. Chikata, you've taken over?
Yes, very good. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, Carla Daly, Senior Resource Planner, will report out for staff.
Good evening, council members. I'm Carla Daly. Have a short presentation for you this evening. The agenda, just quickly in front of you. So just to give a little bit of background on how we got to where we are tonight, the council-approved gas utility long-term plan has a number of strategies and objectives. Strategy number four says, reduce the carbon intensity of the gas portfolio in accordance with the climate protection plan by designing a voluntary program using reasonably-priced non-fossil fuel gas resources and by purchasing non-fossil fuel gas for the portfolio as long as it can be done with no rate impact. So staff did design and council did approve a Palo Alto Green Gas Program. It was modeled very closely after the Palo Alto Green Program as a voluntary opt-in. The current participation in that program is about 4% of residents, 100% of city facilities, and that's about 6% of the city's overall gas demand. We supply that program with environmental offsets with a preference for California projects. And a number of months ago, we had a conversation with the UAC about Palo Alto Green Gas and presented some pros and cons of leaving that program as an opt-in voluntary program or converting it to an opt-out voluntary program. But at that same discussion, put on the table an alternative to scrap the voluntary aspect altogether and move toward a carbon-neutral gas portfolio, which the UAC really liked. And so that was how we moved forward with designing a carbon-neutral gas portfolio plan. Natural gas use in 2015 accounted for about 27% of the city's greenhouse gas emissions. You can see that as the electric portfolio has become carbon-neutral, the only other, the most significant contributor is still transportation, but natural gas is by no means insignificant in the contribution of greenhouse gases. So just to kind of set the stage for the discussion that will happen this evening, an environmental offset, so that everyone has the definitions, that we're all speaking on the same terms, is a reduction in emissions of CO2 or other greenhouse gases made in order to compensate for or to offset an emission made somewhere else. So as an example, installing a manure management system on a dairy farm that reduces methane emissions will generate offsets. The California Resources Board, or CARB, has a number of protocols that provide robust methods to quantify and report on these reductions. Another term that will probably come up in the discussion this evening is biogas, and that is methane produced from the decay of organic matter. So a dairy farm that is generating offsets by preventing methane from entering the atmosphere can also be selling that biogas as a renewable resource. The price of biogas right now is driven by the federal renewable transportation fuel program, and it's quite costly compared to offsets, about 28 times more costly. The original staff recommendation that was made to the UAC and then to the Finance Committee included biogas in the portfolio in that proposal. And staff estimated that for a 10 cent per therm rate impact, we could incorporate about 5% biogas into the portfolio with remaining being covered by offsets. So that was the, that was the original proposal that went to the UAC and Finance, not the proposal that's before you this evening. Also, when we spoke to the UAC and the Finance Committee, we laid out a number of different portfolio combinations of offsets and biogas and presented what the rate impacts would be for those different portfolios. I'm not going to spend time going through them, but they are in the report for you. Rate impact, I think it's important to talk about the difference in the rate impact situation for the electric carbon-neutral portfolio versus a gas carbon-neutral portfolio. For the electric portfolio, because of the RPS requirement and the large hydro supply in that portfolio, becoming carbon-free was not as much of a leap as it is for gas. So the rate impact was relatively small to move to carbon neutrality for the electric portfolio, about 1% to 2%, and then almost zero after 2016. The gas portfolio, on the other hand, is 100% fossil fuel. There are no renewable requirements. So one would expect that the rate impact would be a bit more, 10%, a 10 cent per therm rate impact, which was the, again, the proposal that went to the UAC and Finance that incorporated some biogas in the portfolio, is about a 10% rate increase. A 4 cent per therm, which is staff's estimate of what it would cost to use just offsets, is about a 4% rate increase. There's a table at the bottom of the slide that shows the Palo Alto's gas rates relative to PG&Es. You can see that on a volumetric basis, the Palo Alto rate is significantly lower than PG&Es. But we also generated this graph to show you, because Palo Alto has a fixed charge associated with our gas rates, that it's important to look at use, different usages and where the, where our rates differ from PG&Es. You can see that at about 20 therms per month in the wintertime, that's when we break over as being less expensive than PG&E, and an average customer's winter usage is more like 50 therms per month. On the other hand, in the summer, we're actually a bit more expensive than PG&E. So the Finance Committee voted two to one to recommend the following, approving a resolution that approves the carbon-neutral plan and terminates the existing voluntary program. And then they additionally directed staff to develop an implementation plan, provide an option for council to consider prioritizing local offsets, and prioritizing maximizing carbon reduction within the 10 cent per therm rate impact cap. So staff interpreted this to include the following steps. Implement a 100% carbon-neutral gas portfolio by FY '18 and spend no more than 10 cents per therm, but only buy enough offsets to cover the gas burned here in Palo Alto, which is really expected to cost about 4 cents per therm. Use high-quality environmental offsets, as we currently do for the voluntary program. Do not purchase any biogas. And the environmental offsets would prefer California project only if the cost is equal to non-California, and prefer local projects if such a program, if such a project can be developed by staff, and we would need to return to council to determine whether a premium above market is warranted for those local projects. So based on how staff has interpreted the Finance Committee's direction, this is the recommended resolution before you tonight to approve the carbon-neutral gas plan, terminate the voluntary program, and then direct staff to do the following things. Develop an implementation plan for the program, prefer offsets from California projects if it's price competitive, minimize the cost to achieve carbon reduction within the 10 cent per therm rate impact cap, return to council so that it can determine the acceptable premium, if any, to be paid for local offset projects, and consult with stakeholders on potential methods to fund alternatives to offsets, including methods involving voter So our next steps are to get your direction this evening, revise the resolution if needed, execute enabling agreements to purchase offsets, develop new rate schedules for your approval, revise Gulp, because if you remember at the beginning of the presentation, Gulp is inconsistent with any rate impact to customers for carbon neutrality, and then communicate with the current voluntary program participants to let them know that that program would be terminating. That concludes staff's comments.
Thank you. So before hearing from members of the public, we can ask technical questions of staff. Does anyone wish to kick this off?
Let me ask the question that, I was just searching through my emails and see if I could find some of the inquiries that came in, dealing in particular with offsets. I think offsets are not well-understood, and maybe you can go into that a little further. As somebody wrote, if I could find the exact quote, doesn't this really excuse somebody else in some other part of the world for what may be happening there? So I think offsets are not, as I said, are not clearly understood. I've seen, I see your examples. I just want to hear it in everyday language.
Right. So an offset excuses what is happening in Palo Alto by reducing greenhouse gas emissions somewhere else. That's the concept of an offset.
Can you go a little further on that?
So, so if there's a project somewhere else that is preventing greenhouse gases from entering the atmosphere, then natural gas can be burned here instead. So, I mean, this is, the example that I gave of a dairy farm preventing methane from going into the air generates an offset. We purchased that offset in, or Terrapass. Terrapass is a pretty well-known offset program that you may remember. They had a lot of popularity a few years ago where people would buy offsets from Terrapass to compensate for the gasoline burning in their vehicle, and put a Terrapass bumper sticker on the back of their car. Same concept.
Councilmember Niss, could I jump in, just since you asked?
Yeah, please, because there are those that think this is a feel-good kind of option instead of a real option.
So I'm just giving sort of my perspective on it, so I don't necessarily, it's more of a layperson's perspective, and some folks may agree or not agree. You know, one simple way to think about it is, you know, for each one of us, say, air travel is like one of the most, you know, carbon-intensive things that we do. And so I can fly someplace, and I could buy an offset that would, in a sense, sort of green up the trip that I took. That being said, the airplane I was flying in was still dumping carbon all into the atmosphere. So this, this is where, what the kind of disconnect that can exist is, is are we really changing our behavior by having offsets? On the other hand, I think the city has demonstrated that offsets are a step from, you know, just burning carbon to moving to a carbon-free setting. And the staff recommendation here, even on offsets, as I understand it, is, and the Finance Committee, is to make a step in greening up our portfolio along the way to allow for the use of offsets while we're also looking at more permanent sort of changes to come. I mean, it would be not offset.
Yeah. And I understand what you're saying. I understand the intent for sure. I understand the intent for sure, but would say that if there were any comments that I saw repeatedly coming in on my email, that was one of them. And maybe somebody in the audience will give a much better explanation, or one that's more sort of sidewalk explanation as we go forward tonight.
I mean, one of the things that we currently operate under for the voluntary program is to use only California Air Resources Board-approved protocols, verified projects. So, you know, the intent of that is that there's, it's very well-documented that whatever greenhouse gas reduction was truly additional to what that operation would have done without the money for the offset.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember DeBois.
Hi. So can you talk about the process a local entity would have to go through to qualify to provide offsets?
Well, again, the CARB has a number of protocols that spell out in detail what constitutes an offset project. One example would be an urban forestry project, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on the details of how to certify an urban forestry project, but it has to be additional to what would have happened under normal operations of a city or whoever might be planting the trees. And then the trees have to stay in the ground for some certain number of years, stay alive for some certain amount of time. I mean, there's a lot of rules about what constitutes an offset project. So should the city, for example, decide to certify an urban forestry project, they would have to meet all those protocols laid out by CARB.
If I might add, councilmember, I think it's fair to say, from the utilities department's perspective, we've done a relatively light review of the steps involved with actually certifying project. Know that Public Works and Urban Forestry is looking into the potential to develop a certified program, certified project. As Carla pointed out, my understanding is both the planting that needs to be evaluated in terms of its carbon benefit, as well as maintaining the trees, in this case, for 25 years. So I think that's, there is a specific protocol that's involved, and the city could look further into developing a certified project if that's something that the council wants to pursue.
Do you think we'd be able to be certified ourselves and basically use the money for our own projects?
Just based on an initial read of the documentation, it does look like the protocol set up for a city or utility to take on, we really are not ready to say what would be involved, and much less whether it would be cost-effective at the scale of a Palo Alto project. And again, in comparison to the market price of carbon offsets. So I think those are the kinds of issues that we'd want to look more deeply into.
And then, different kind of questions. So we're looking at increase in gas rates of 4% to 10%. What would be the impact on low-income or fixed-income consumers? Would they actually pay less than that?
Yeah, we would have to increase the rate for everyone. We can't have the low-income folks be excluded from it. We do have low-income programs that they are, they can be eligible for. There's our, let's see, what's it called? Residential Energy Assistance Program, REAP. We go and do weatherization and provide free furnaces and appliances like refrigerators to reduce the usage. There's also programs where they do get a discount on electric and gas bill, but, you know, the rate would go up, the bill would go up, and they'd be subject to that, too.
Okay. Thanks.
One of the discussions at the Finance Committee was the problem of doing local offsets, especially in those areas where the greatest value seems to be, cooking, heating, local purchases of electric cars, that Prop 216 or 26 form a legal barrier to take a citywide utility cost and benefit single individuals. Maybe it's a legal question of, is there any possibilities over the next couple of years of there being cases or interpretations that might allow a greater freedom for local utilities to utilize their funds?
So, thank you. It's a broad question. City Attorney Molly Stumpf. So California constitutional amendment, Proposition 26, does apply to gas and electric rates and sets some basic requirements. It doesn't drill down to the very specifics that we may want to explore here. So we are working to understand various innovative ideas and how they might apply under the law. Under the California Constitution, voters also have the ability to ratify a program and essentially pass it as a voter matter, and that will enable a lot more flexibility in areas where we may be limited otherwise.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. So, I'll try and phrase this question. So we're looking for, one of the recommendations you have here is prefer California projects if cost equals non-California, prefer local projects. So I clearly get preferring local projects as a separate value, but isn't, is the overarching value to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and if we look at, do the people rank it? Like, this is really my question. If you rank these carbon offset programs, do they say this one reduces gas by, I mean, reduces greenhouse gas emissions by this for this amount of money, and this one reduces this amount? Or what do they look like when you go out to the market to buy them?
Yeah, it's a dollars per ton. It's just a, it's a market clearinghouse. Right.
So if something's in California and something's in Nebraska, for instance, it makes no difference? It's just a market price, right? So we could buy in California, and it wouldn't be that we could get better bang for our buck in Nebraska or anywhere else like that, right? It's because it's just a pure market on what you get.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And so can you choose between California and, they'd be the same price then, the California ones and the Nebraska ones, right? Or the California and the non-California? Why did I just say that?
Yeah, I see where you're going. If there, they should, yes, they should be the same price, but there's not always a California project out there and available. So if there happened to be one in California, we would buy that one.
But if not, we wouldn't. And that's what that means?
Correct.
Okay. I got that. We talked about this. And there's a group that certifies. What's it called? The CARB Board, is that it? Or who certifies? Who makes sure that this is a high-quality, real thing that we're buying that's really reducing greenhouse gas emissions?
Right. So CARB, yeah, CARB certifies the protocol, so all the steps that a project has to go through, and then we would hire a third-party verifier to make sure that what's supposed to be happening out in the field is actually happening.
Okay. Just to be clear. For the public, I mean, that's the California Air Resources Board?
And then in terms of biogas, just briefly, I see that there's a federal, I saw it somewhere in here, there's a, was it, there's a mandate to buy biogas by the renewable transportation. That's a federal mandate, is that right? And that, and that makes it 21 times higher the price for that. Is all the biogas, then, that's produced bought? It must be, right, at such a high price?
Yes, but there are new, there are new projects coming online all the time, so...
So what does a biogas project look like?
Most, more often than not, it's a landfill.
So it's like landfill gas?
Mm-hmm.
So is biogas the same thing as landfill gas projects?
Yes.
Okay. So I remember, so it could be landfill gas and it could be dairy, but are most of the big ones landfill gas? Then I was just trying to get a sense of what these projects are.
Most of the big ones are landfill gas.
Okay. And there's two ways, then, to do landfill gas. What they can, what they do is they burn the gas to produce electricity, which they sell into the market, or you can actually collect the gas and sell it as biogas.
That's correct.
From an environmental greenhouse gas emissions perspective, do we care which one they do?
Do we, as Palo Alto, care?
Well, look, let's assume our, let's assume our value is the least greenhouse gas emissions, and that's our overriding value. So is there a difference in which creates more or less greenhouse gas emissions if we produce electricity or if we bottle this up? And I don't know what we do. Do we have a pipeline that goes to a natural gas? I mean, I assume it goes into the natural gas grid of wherever it is.
Right. So if we, Palo Alto, were going to buy it, we would do some sort of an exchange where we would actually buy gas closer to home, and we would swap it with gas somewhere else. We wouldn't physically move it from a landfill in Wisconsin or wherever to Palo Alto.
So my question is about incentives. My question is, look, whether or not we buy this gas or not, you know, it's not going to make a huge difference. So the question is, is what are we incentivizing? Are we incentivizing taking this and doing it as gas, or burning it on-site and flaring it? Or not flaring it, burning it on-site and creating electricity? And which is better for the environment? Because we, if we're buying the gas from landfill gas rather than buying the electricity, we are saying we have a preference, and we think that's the environmental preferable alternative, as opposed to having them create electricity out of it. And I was asking which one we think is better. Because I remember the Sierra Club had huge issues with landfill gas, period. There was a whole bunch of stuff they wrote about it. I remember we had these arguments, we talked about not buying any more landfill net, landfill gas projects for our portfolio. I don't know if you recall those discussions or not.
As I recall the arguments against the landfill gas projects, and that was where we had an electric generator sited right at the landfill, is they didn't like the idea of having recyclables or other things that would ultimately break down into methane brought into the landfill at all. They wanted, they felt like there was some incentive to continue to put things like paper and things like that that would ultimately break down, rather than recycling them and getting them out of the waste stream. That was one of the big arguments against the landfill gas.
And that would be the same with biogas from a landfill. I mean, you'd have the same argument, I assume. But my question was, which is preferable? And maybe we don't know from an environmental point of view.
I mean, I think once you destroy it by burning it, it's equal environmentally. I mean, it's really bad if you let the methane just go up into the atmosphere.
No, no, clear enough. I think we should check on that, because there may be, there may be issues involved in how distribution and collection and how that all goes into that makes a difference in how, in GHG emissions. And I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna try and set an example, because this is really what this is, this is not going to make that much difference in greenhouse gas emissions from what we use. It's much more of a, what is a best practices here for the rest of the world to look at, frankly, if we're going to put it in those terms. I think we should understand the impacts of what we're doing and why we're doing it on sort of a more granular detail when it comes to biogas. And I know this, I know we're not looking at purchasing biogas under the staff recommendation, but that may come back to us at some point, and I think I'd like to understand biogas a lot better at that point.
And if I might comment, I think your point, Vice Mayor, is relevant to other potential offsets, to the extent that you're pointing out some of the issues associated with the lifecycle cost and/or lifecycle impact of delivering, whether it be, again, the gas itself or offsets. So I think that's a part of the certification process, or at least the development of the protocols that lead to certification that would be involved, and again, in this case, whether it's CARB or some other certifying body. And in the case of biogas, I think that if we were to pursue that, again, those same issues of how far you chase the analysis would be relevant.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hobak.
I'm looking at this slide, I think, well, actually, slides 12 and 13, and a couple of questions. I should remember, because I was there. Did we specifically say that we preferred California over non-California as a recommendation at Finance Committee?
Slide 11 shows the Finance Committee's motion.
That's what I thought. Okay. And secondly, on slide 13, when it says, actually, maybe it was, actually, it's also on slide 12, you know, this question of, at current offset prices, it's 4 cents a therm to buy enough offsets to have a completely carbon-neutral gas portfolio, correct?
Correct.
And we said we were comfortable with a rate impact up to 10 cents per therm, correct?
That, correct.
So is it possible to have the rates go up by 10 cents a therm and use the difference between the cost of full carbon offset and 10 cents a therm for other improvements such as efficiency improvements at properties in Palo Alto, as long as it's available to all Palo Alto residents or all ratepayers?
I think that's a compound question, and so Carla or Jane could kick me on the table if I go astray here. There are a few pieces to that. One is, there's a bit of a conflict, or I'll call it a conflict, between using the 10 cent rate and minimizing, as stated here, purchase the lowest-cost environmental offset. So there's that gap between the 4 cents and 10 cents that we're trying to reconcile. So that's one. The other is what any increase in revenue could be used for. I think as the city attorney pointed out, our assumption, the baseline, is that we're operating within the bounds of Prop 26, which says that we effectively could only use those funds, or the funds are for the delivery of the service. And so, again, a bit of a conflict for us in identifying uses that would justify, and this is not stated correctly, but the additional revenue. So that's where I think we have been challenged to identify a way to meet all of the elements of the Finance Committee's recommendation, which is where we took a stab on slide 13, as you pointed to, and as the city attorney pointed out, and Councilmember Schmidt, in looking at the potential value of taking a little more time and evaluating what some of those options would be, last recommendation, including consulting with stakeholders on methods to fund alternatives to offsets, including methods that could require voter approval. So that's where we took that extra step of saying, you know, I don't think we're quite ready to definitively state what those uses would be, so we might suggest some additional analysis and some additional time to identify what those options and paths forward would be.
So I just want to make sure I really understood. Basically, we can look into that, and we're not sure yet, but we're able to investigate that question for the future?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So let me follow up on some of those questions on other uses or other sources of funds to be able to achieve some of the objectives that we might have to reduce our natural gas use in the city. First, we have a certain amount of leakage loss, correct? Refugee gas. And could we use these funds for that purpose, serving every ratepayer equally, presumably, because they would get not only the benefit, environmental benefit, of... Because they would get not only the, the benefit, environmental benefit of not having a, a high impact greenhouse gas emission from methane going directly to the atmosphere, which has a great, far greater impact than CO2 in, uh, but they would also get some return on that investment, basically, because we're right now paying for every, uh, amount of that gas that leaks. So could any of these funds between the, what's the, what the Finance Committee authorized up to the 10 cent a therm impact and the four cent that it would perhaps cost us for the offsets, could those be used for that purpose?
So you're asking if we could use money to fix more leaks than we're fixing now?
Correct.
Um, I mean, we can certainly look into that. I would, I would assume we're, we're fixing all the leaks that we find already.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm assuming that we're already fixing leaks that we know about.
Well, but I don't know how many we know about. We've, what's the balance between the amount of gas that we acquire wholesale and what we sell? I thought that there was a gap between.
There's definitely a gap, and some of that is, not all of that is leakage. Some of it is billing errors, metering errors, that sort of thing, actual leakage.
So have we done, what's the company that, Bizarro, that has the mobile monitoring of methane emissions? Have we surveyed how much leakage we have going on in the community?
Yes, and we, and we do an audit. I don't know the number off the top of my head, what leakage is off the top of my head, but you're right, there is, there is some leakage.
Yeah, I, I assume that there is some greater effort that we could take, and it may be that on a pure, outside of this issue, we might have one economic analysis that says, well, for every dollar we spend to detect a leak, we only save 80 cents of gas, or hypothetically. But when we put it in this context, then we're saving significantly on greenhouse gas emissions. Methane is what, how mu, 80, I mean, 20% times more impactful than CO2 on?
29.
29, I'm hearing. Do we go for 30? So, uh, so that's, that, I'm sorry? All right, I'll, I'll let people, in the public comments, they'll let me know the correct number. So let's just say it, it has a, a very significant greenhouse gas impact from any of those refugee emissions. So my question was, is there anything that restricts us? Under Prop 26, would we be able to spend the dollars for that purpose?
I believe we could, certainly.
Okay. Second, we, we currently get cap and trade dollars back to the city. Can you explain to the best you, you're prepared to tonight, how many dollars those are and how they are restricted, and whether any of those dollars potentially could be used for purposes of either efficient elec, electric appliances that, by the way, also, if they were replacing gas stoves or gas hot water heaters would, or, or gas dryers, whether they would, whether those funds either from a, a gas cap and trade fund or electric cap and trade fund could be used toward our electrification objectives? Because they, I, I'm assuming that they're, we have greater discretion on their use than we might on these funds, or I guess that's another clarifying question I would have. Do we in fact have greater discretion?
Well, there are, there are rules around what you can use that money for, and those are from CARB. But we do get maybe between $4.5 to $5 million a year on the electric side from the sale, which we're required to sell, the allowances that are provided for free. We don't know if this program will persist after 2020. On the gas side, we get some, we get some, but we also have a compliance obligation. And so we have to buy these allowances in the cap and trade auction, and that, it's a, it's a cost to us. In fact, we have a little part of the bill that's a rate component where this, these cap and trade cost. And you're saying that it's about a million dollars?
In cost and revenue.
In cost and revenue on the, on the gas side. So on the electric side, where we have the, the four and a half-ish million dollars a year, those funds have to be used to benefit electric ratepayers. And what PG&E does with them is give it back to electric ratepayers in their bill every six months. Here, according to the policy, we spend it on renewables, efficiency, and carbon neutral plan.
We choose to send it on, spend it on electricity efficiency, that's directly. But if it must go to electric ratepayers, I'm an electric ratepayer. And if the city offered me a discount on an electric heat pump or an induction stove or an efficient gas dryer, aren't those funds helping me as an electric ratepayer? And aren't those, and, and if we favored most efficient, um, electric appliances and, and we did not offer them for less efficient electric appliances, wouldn't that be compliant?
Not if it's not cost effective. All the efficiency programs we do are cost effective. In other words, it's cheaper for us to do the efficiencies than not, so that benefits all ratepayers, whether you participate in the program or not.
Cost effective to what end?
Using the total resource cost test, it's a societal test, so that overall, that the total cost is less than the total benefit.
So if in.
And you can argue about, you know, what might be included on both those sides.
Well, if in Palo Alto, I have carbon-free electricity, and if I'm looking at cost effectiveness of, of a, a given subsidy toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which I assume that that's the cost effectiveness standard, is that correct?
Can you repeat that definition again?
Well, you say it has to be cost effective. It's cost effective against what standard? Reducing greenhouse gas emissions? Is it a cost effective, is that the standard of cost effectiveness?
It is the, the, the total cost, the lifetime cost of that appliance and all the electricity it uses versus the cost of the gas appliance and the gas it uses, or whatever things you're comparing. And you would, you know, whether you want to add an internal sort of extra carbon cost on that, but remember that the cap and trade program does include the carbon value for electric and gas. And so there's, it's included in that form.
Mr. King?
So, look, I can jump in, and I, I may be mistaken in what I'm talking about. But first of all, I mean, I don't think the council's questions tonight are driving towards a specific resolution completely tonight, but sort of trying to get clear about what can happen in the future. And most of what we've been talking about are potential limitations or restrictions placed upon the city by Proposition 26, which is outside of the city's control. Now, I'm not saying that this is correct, but this little chart that I'm reading here says that in 2015, it looks like we got 501,000 in revenue through cap and trade stuff related to the gas, or gas portfolio, I'm just saying. Now, that's not huge amounts of money to be reinvesting in energy efficiency, but even if it's that number, the council adopted permissible allowances for the revenue, investment in energy efficiency programs for the city's natural gas portfolio and retail customers, a number of options. It sounds to me like our energy efficiency program is our own program in the way we determine what we're going to invest. And the reason I just bring that up is that's, that's a big difference between our own policies that we've set, that exists for very good reasons, but for which the city has complete discretion over in Proposition 26.
So let me try to just frame this a little along the lines of what I think the city manager was talking about. Our, our traditional energy efficiency programs were, we took electric, electricity efficiency, and we looked at ways that we could reduce our electricity use. We took our gas and looked at ways we could reduce our gas use. But now we're, we're looking at a, a transfer from one energy source to another. And the efficiency was to reduce our environmental impact. That was the purpose of the efficiency. If we have a clean commodity of our electricity and a, a greenhouse gas emitting commodity of our gas, then we have a new concept of efficiency, of switching from gas to electricity, from dirty gas to clean electricity, is arguably an efficiency in reducing our environmental impact. And so I don't want to try to resolve that tonight, but that was the purpose of those questions, was to probe whether we can rethink that definition of permissible uses in order to obtain efficiency. And they're not just within that bucket. They could be moving from one bucket over to another bucket and might have a far greater efficiency in terms of reducing our environmental impact. So I'll just leave that because it's supposed to be question session. And final question is, I'm trying to understand how various initiatives that we might take would help achieve this electrification objective that we've said we have also, and it's in our sustainability plan. So we now have this next generation of PACE programs, which I don't know a lot about, but they supposedly have streamlined and made PACE programs more attractive in some ways. Is that something that, I, I was thinking we were going to be getting from Utilities Department, a, a new kind of global PACE program authorization that allows different providers to be more readily adopted, to have their programs more readily adopted in, in our city? And how might that fit in with, say, an online, uh, uh, on-bill financing of some of these appliances and things? And is that another way that we can achieve this outcome?
So at, at this point, I think the limit of what staff has been working on is to follow up on the A-BAG, I think it's authorization that's looked at multi-PACE providers, and provide more of a categorical ability for cities to participate in those programs, or ultimately residents to participate in those programs. I'm not aware that it crosses over from energy efficiency and solar to gas efficiency per se.
So I, I asked one of the providers whether things like heat pumps could be included in this, these new PACE programs. Their answer was that yes, it could. So that goes into a question, and I don't, I mean, there's not really a financial contribution that the cities make when they enable PACE programs, but would that be another way that we might be able to promote adoption of the electrification initiatives that we're seeking? And I don't know what would be permissible within that context either. Either a use of the cap and trade dollars or under Prop 26, any of these dollars. So why don't I just leave that with staff for the moment? I know that we're, what we're doing is trying to probe ways that we can solve this problem and have perhaps a parallel path between the offsets that we have and what we're talking about, of where we go beyond that to begin to achieve the electrification. And this is our opportunity to, to look at direction that we might want to give staff to follow up on, not that we would be able to decide these things tonight, as the city manager said. Okay. Let's go to the public, and we have a number of speakers. Our first speaker is Sandra Slater, to be followed by Lisa Van Dusen. Welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers, for the opportunity to address you this evening, and also thanks you for your commitment and all the hard work you do on behalf of our community, and to the staff also for all their hard work on this project. This has definitely been a group effort involving Lisa Van Dusen and me as sort of citizens, bringing this forward, the UAC, our fine city staff, and thanks to Jane for your 30 years of service, and to Carla for her work, and the Finance Committee. We've been advancing and shepherding this through the various entities, and there's been almost, really a unanimous agreement that something must be done to mitigate the harmful effects of natural gas. Natural gas was once considered a great way to wean ourselves off of coal, and as such was touted as the cleaner bridge to a renewable energy future, but we were misinformed. Natural gas is an extremely potent not, greenhouse gas. In fact, in answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, according to the Union of Concerned Scientists, the drilling and extraction of natural gas from wells and transportation and pipelines results in the leakage of methane that is 86 times stronger a greenhouse gas over 20-year period. Preliminary studies and field measurements show that these so-called fugitive emissions are just the tip of the iceberg. They occur not only in extraction, but in the transporting of gas right here in Palo Alto, and even as it travels through the city to our homes and businesses. And Carla alluded earlier that about 27% of our carbon footprint comes from natural gas, but that doesn't even include the fugitive emissions, which are substantial. The purchasing of high-quality offsets is the least we can do. It's not a panacea, but it is a great step in the right direction. I would support developing local offsets, as we've discussed tonight, to make our community even more efficient and resilient, and hope that you can direct staff to study this further. You voted last week to adopt the S-CAP for if 80 by 30, and I applaud your unanimous decision for that. The Green Gas Initiative supports this effort and will send a signal to Palo Altons that we are using all the tools in the toolbox to reach that goal. The Green Gas Program offers an interim strategy. I'm a firm believer in an all-of-the-above tactic to get to where we need to be. We need efficiency programs, local offsets, fuel switch to cleaner energy sources for our cars and our homes. We need a real tax on carbon, but these things all take time. It's imperative that we increase our efforts on efficiency and fuel switching, finding creative ways to finance and implement these programs through programs like on-bill financing. The council passed a resolution in 2009 to account for all externalities in the way the city does its business. This helps you fulfill that promise of that resolution. We have, as a community, decided that to be bold. Let's continue down this moral path with a program that moves us in the right direction and know that we're doing as much as possible, as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Van Dusen, to be followed by Dr. William Conlin.
Good evening, Mayor Burt, and members of the City Council, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight after more than a year and a half of hatching and herding this initiative along. We have mandates from all corners to move as swiftly and boldly and nimbly as possible to address Palo Alto's remaining carbon footrip, footprint, we've seen on the screen kind of where that lies. When Sandra and I, both members of the S-CAP Advisory Council, though we're here as individuals tonight, scratched our chins about mid-2015, about where to best point our carbon-reducing energy, we spotted this initiative as low-hanging fruit, looking at the Opt-In Green Natural Gas Program and what, what that could become. Fast forward, we're standing here tonight because we've worked with, as Sandra mentioned, all the people involved, and again, I want to just tip my hat to Jane Ratchee's 30 years of service. I have experienced all the things that were said about her tonight personally. So it's really been a team effort, and it wouldn't be without, without the City Council, the Finance Committee, the UAC, some members of which are here tonight, Gil Friend, and others in the community that we're here. So, and it's gotten better every step of the way. I'd like to just say, and also the discussion that's happening tonight is really helpful. It's, it's really encouraging to hear this discussion and all the thinking. So thank you, thank you for approving that framework and for your commitment. And I think that commitment is what's really important here, which is that this is a beginning and this isn't an ending. and this isn't an ending point, and I'm hearing that commitment in your discussion and also at the UAC level. So this is flexible, and as all these things become clearer, and there's a lot of work to do, I think this resolution before you can flex with the new technology, the regulations, our local needs and opportunities. It can move along with that. We're also in a position where carbon emissions know nor borders, and that we're sending a price signal that we want to get off natural gas. So just the increase in price alone is powerful. So as a number of you have said, we want to lead, and let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good here. So take the action you can take tonight and look to all the ways that we can be more and more serious and local and leaderly in the way that we move ahead in deploying our financial and other resources. So you do have an opportunity to communicate to the citizens of Palo Alto, as well as to the world, that we're not going to stop until we reach and ideally beat our goal of 80 by 30. So keep calm and carbon reduce on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dr. William Conlin, to be followed by Frank Wasco.
Green light? Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Bill Conlin, and I've been professionally engaged in reducing CO2 emissions since I first learned about the greenhouse effect in 1973. I've been involved in the energy business since receiving my PhD and have decades of experience in power generation, including California's largest single-carbon-free electricity source, the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant. I co-invented and commercialized the steam-injected gas turbine for combined heat and power, at the time, the most fuel-efficient means of converting fossil fuel into useful heat and work. I led the development and commercialization and sale of utility-scale solar power, supervising projects on three continents. I'm the founder and president of Pentel Power, which is revolutionizing the storage of renewable power at the largest scales, and I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of California and a spouse of Utility Advisory Commissioner Judith Schwartz. But despite my qualifications, I'm speaking as a resident of Palo Alto for nearly 35 years. So think globally, act locally. That's the mantra of effective environmental leadership, but this measure really turns this mantra inside out. First of all, biogas is virtually the same as natural gas, and any biogas we would procure under this measure or other measures will come out of the same pipeline as before without actually changing greenhouse gases locally within Palo Alto. Globally, this measure would not create a market for biogas because that market already exists. There's a dire shortage of biogas, and all we could do is worsen that shortage and drive up prices still more. But you already know that the price of gas is unaffordable. Biogas is unaffordable. So as a compromise, we're considering offsets. But offsets will not reduce local fossil fuel emissions. Offsets will not reduce fugitive emissions of methane as the gas production, transmission, and distribution infrastructure is unchanged. So this measure is about thinking locally while hoping that global action occurs. Instead, Palo Alto needs to again take action locally, take leadership locally, and that's things like increasing electrification, teams to go after fugitive emissions from all the accessible natural gas joints in the city, teams working with fire and building and utilities to go after inside-building fugitive emissions. Let's set up a program to get people more efficient appliances, and let's keep the existing opt-in program for people who want to do this while we go about the real work of solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Wasco, to be followed by Bruce Hodge.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished city council members. I am Frank Wasco, Director of Programs for the Clean Coalition. The Clean Coalition is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to accelerate the transition to renewable energy in a modern grid through technical, policy, and project development expertise. We, the Clean Coalition, support the carbon-neutral natural gas plan that has been recommended by the finance committee and staff. The Clean Coalition will also encourage that council direct staff to investigate possibilities for using the collected funds for local electrification measures. As you probably know, the Clean Coalition is keen to facilitate local solutions, and while the proposed carbon-neutral natural gas plan relies on remote offsets at the start, council can guide staff to research the legal and programmatic options for investing in local electrification projects. Key opportunities exist for supporting local electrification measures, including prioritizing electric vehicle purchases when fulfilling the city's vehicle needs going forward and incentivizing broad community adoption of electric appliances like heat pumps, induction cooktops, and electric dryers. As a case in point, San Francisco has a program that could serve as a guide, collecting funds that are used for local projects. The program I'm referring to is the San Francisco Carbon Fund. This innovative fund is the first of its kind to invest solely in local projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions rather than large-scale offset projects across the globe. Finally, the proposed carbon-neutral natural gas plan would, however, also be an important part to meeting council's aggressive sustainability goal to reduce the city's GHD emissions by 80% by 2030. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Hodge, to be followed by Brett Anderson.
Bruce Hodge from Carbon Free Palo Alto. I want to take this opportunity to thank Jane Ratchee for her years of service with utility and her contributions towards establishing a carbon-neutral electric utility. I'm quite sure that her departure will leave a knowledge gap that will be hard to fill. So best wishes to her in her future endeavors. We've submitted a policy brief for your consideration, which examines the carbon-neutral natural gas portfolio plan in more detail. In a nutshell, we believe that the use of offsets alone is an ineffectual approach. Yes, we're aware of the Prop 26 issues and submit that a further exploration of the possibilities of qualifying local investments under Prop 26 are in order. The idea would be to invest in activities that would bootstrap the electrification efforts and benefit all gas customers equally by creating a pathway to avoid the damage that's being done by the use of natural gas. Creating a fund for subsidies and rebates is not what we have in mind. Instead of taking an expedient approach that papers over the problem and skirts the larger issues at hand, we urge the council to send this proposal back to staff to generate a more comprehensive and holistic approach that details the relative spending and emphasis on a suite of strategies for reducing the use of natural gas. In fact, our understanding is that this is already in progress, so it would not be a curveball for staff. However, almost by definition, the staff response needs to be a cross-departmental effort. After completing this broader examination, we may conclude that the strategy of tapping into ratepayer revenues is actually counterproductive, given the restrictions of Prop 26. Lastly, the proposal neglects to mention the very real negative perceptions that could be associated with an offsets-only approach. The potential fallout from both residents and external observers should be avoided by spelling out a comprehensive approach that results in real local reductions in the use of natural gas. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Anderson, to be followed by John Kelly.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brett Anderson from Carbon Free Palo Alto. I want to add on to what Bruce said regarding our brief that was sent to you prior to this evening. So our objection to the plan is really is a standalone plan. Offsets might be useful as a bridge if there is a specific and recognizable path off of those offsets and off of gas in the ultimate goal. We're asking ratepayers potentially to pay, if we look at a 4% increase, about 1.2 million per year from our gas. We may be paying for allowances, what I heard earlier this evening, perhaps half a million per year just for the gas portfolio. If we're not making investments congruent to that on the electrification and the path off of gas, I don't think that we can credibly just offer an offsets program without some linkage to funding efforts to get us off the gas itself. That represents money that's leaving our community and not being reinvested in our homes for the comfort and the real benefits that we get from higher efficiency as well as higher functionality, but also we're not investing in our own electric infrastructure, which we need going forward in an electric future. We need that functionality. We need the additional storage from electric vehicles. We need the additional electric loads that are provided by the heat pumps as well as other electric appliances that may replace the gas appliances. I think the other financing aspect of this is that anything that reduces the gas use, that could be insulation, and it could be other ways to save, weather stripping, new windows, these are upgrades to the home that also have an impact on the use of the natural gas. So that reduces the load required for the gas, but it also reduces the load when we convert to electric. So all of those items can be financed, the upfront cost, using our own utility, which provides the benefit of financing on the bill, making it easy for customers to choose those measures, and basically addressing the barriers that have historically inhibited investment in efficiency and electrification that would otherwise be cost-effective or profitable in the long term for customers. So with our own utility, we have a very big advantage in moving forward aggressively to introduce with any kind of an offset program, an actual electrification program, gives people real local choices to improve their own comfort and efficiency at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Kelly, to be followed by Don McDougal.
Mayor Burt, Vice Mayor Scharf, council members. I think Councilmember Niss really asked a good question, which is what is the common-sense analogy that will help you deal with this issue? And I was thinking, I'll give it a whack trying to answer that. And so what I'd like to offer you is that an offset is a little bit like a bottle redemption fee. When you go in the store and buy a can of beer, a bottle of pop, whatever it is, and you're stupid enough to throw it away, and somebody comes back and picks it up, and they take it to the store, and they get five cents back, that's kind of like what an offset really is. Because if you're stupid enough right now, and we all are, to go out and put methane or put CO2 in the atmosphere and think it's not doing harm to the world, you know, we kind of get away for free because we haven't paid the five cents at the store. So if we do offsets, if we increase the price, it's like charging all of us a modest fee, five cents. I think it actually should be much higher than that, but we're starting small here. You've already said you're comfortable going up 10 cents or therm. Okay, it's kind of like raising that bottle fee from five cents to 10 cents. And some of us will get the message through that price increase. This is the single most important thing that you can do tonight. You put this in place, you raise the price on carbon emissions and on methane emissions, and we will do less wasting because we'll be more conscious about how we do it. I'm very sympathetic to what Bruce has said, to what Brett said, to what others have said. I think electrification, doing anything to increase efficiency is fantastic, but let's not make the mistake of waiting for something that's perfect before we start doing things that are good. This is particularly true now in the current national political climate. We've got to do things here because there's not going to be much happening nationally over the next few years. That's sad, it's unfortunate, but we have an opportunity here. So if you want to do something, do it now. Make it clear to the rest of the world that we can raise the price of the emissions, we can take that bottle fee from a nickel to a dime to a quarter. Maybe we should really be taking it to $2 if we're being sensitive to these issues. But we can do it over time, we can do it as the market adapts, and we can do it as we get a better sense of what we can spend money on. The other thing I'd like to point out is that some of the people who are speaking against staff's recommendation tonight, the clarified recommendation, are really attacking a straw man. There's nothing in here that says this is going to be an offset-only program. In fact, if you put up the slide of the clarified recommendation again, I just want to read what it says. "Direct staff to," a bunch of other things, "E, consult with stakeholders on potential methods to fund alternatives to offsets, including methods involving voter approval." I think staff is sensitive enough and smart enough and creative enough and dedicated enough to really tackle this problem, and if they can find good ways to use money to improve our greenhouse gas emissions program other than buying offsets, I think staff will come back to you very promptly with a great set of recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don McDougal, to be followed by Lisa Altieri.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and council members. Pretty hard at this point to say much original relative to all of the great speakers you have. I want to re-echo applauding all of the people who have been involved at this point, the staff, Gil and the 80/30, Lisa and Sandra, the Carbon Free Palo Alto people who have participated in a vigorous and, I think, robust and energetic and thoughtful debate on this subject. So what I want to do is say, from all of those people that have agreements and disagreements, there's certainly one thing I think everybody agrees on, that a real carbon-free Palo Alto is really the objective, not necessarily a carbon-free Palo Alto that is created by buying offsets. And the urgency of that has been talked about, and I think is worth repeating, that the methane problem that is really new, and you know it's relatively new if The Economist and Businessweek are all of a sudden starting to talk about the methane problem, that we're starting to understand that. But relative to the offsets, I think that we should try to do everything we can to have real carbon-free here and not necessarily deal in the offsets. We're supposed to be the center of innovation. That's the thing that Palo Alto's all about, the center of innovation. And to ask a farmer in Iowa to be more innovative relative to eliminating methane than we can be, I think is contradictory. I do appreciate that this is a much, much bigger leap than the electricity leap, but I do support the suggestion that if we are going to, or if council is going to approve this evening, a lease should be done with conditions or modifications so that if there's, if there are offsets, and if there are, they should be only local, that the offsets should be just temporary, and the council should define that temporary condition. I applaud the council's debate tonight, the kinds of questions. The one thing I would encourage that instead of talking about lowest cost or maximizing, I think a word that could be used in this case is optimizing. Mayor Burt talked about the electrical bucket versus the gas bucket. I think optimizing within the constraints of Prop 26 and whatnot, optimizing the energy bucket is really the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Altieri, to be followed by Lisa Forsout.
Hi, good evening. And again, I want to echo thank you for staff, council, utility staff, for looking into strategies to deal with our natural gas emissions. They are very dangerous, and they are very important to our climate goals. However, offsets, as has been said, are not direct reductions in emissions. It's critical for us at this point, given science-based climate goals, that we really directly go to our direct reductions here in our community. Offsets have been one of the main reasons why the Kyoto Protocol and many other efforts on climate reductions have failed and failed to produce local actual emissions reductions. This plan will remove capital from our community. If we enter into an offset program, we will be taking that money, and we will be sending it out of our community instead of using it here to foster fuel switching and electrification that we so desperately need here. I think that it will also discourage some, and it will be confusing for some in our community if we're asking them to consider electrification and fuel switching when they have a gas offset program, and they'll ask us, why do I need to do this? Aren't my emissions already taken care of? And it also takes capital away from them that they And it also takes capital away from them that they could be using towards the costs in order to switch over to electricity for their water heater and their dryer and other appliances. So I think that it's extremely important that if we move a program forward, that that program have only a focus on local fuel switching and local offsets to benefit our community. We have an opportunity. Palo Alto is extremely forward-looking and there are a few communities who have gotten past electrification and are now looking into how do we deal with natural gas. We're leaders here, and it's so important that we set an example for taking this head-on and really doing it right. So we encourage you to consider making a condition that any program be directly put towards electrification locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Forcell, to be followed by Grant Dasher.
Mayor Burt, Vice Mayor Scharf, council members. I'm Lisa Forcell. I'm a member of the Utilities Advisory Commission, although I'm here tonight just in my own personal capacity as a resident. I turned in my comment card, Councilmember Niss, when you expressed a desire for sort of plain English explanation of offsets, and I thought I'd give a couple of invented examples to try to explain the concept because we talked a lot about what we're buying, but maybe coming at it from the other side of what's being sold by those who are selling offsets. So say if you operate a factory somewhere and it's an old, aging, dirty, smelly factory that emits lots of greenhouse gases, carbon dioxide and others, but you're fully within the law, you're not regulated, there's no reason you would reduce your emissions, and it's really expensive to upgrade your factory to reduce the emissions. The offset market provides a funding mechanism so you can, with third-party verification, to make sure you're taking the steps, you install the equipment, you clean up your emissions, you can then get a certain amount of money per ton of carbon dioxide equivalent that you are no longer releasing into the atmosphere that you otherwise would have had you not made these investments. That's one example. Another one might be if you're a landowner who wasn't going to plant trees and you take up forestry and according to accepted forestry protocols are sequestering carbon in a tree canopy, you can sell those carbon offsets into the market. So that, when we talk about what we're buying, is my best attempt to explain to you what we're buying when we buy offsets. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant Dasher, to be followed by, we have another card, by Mike Danaher.
Hello. Thank you, everyone. My name is Grant. I'm a Palo Alto resident, and I just wanted to thank everyone for the hard work that went into this effort. I'm very happy to live in a city that takes this issue seriously, and I want to say that, you know, I want to make a couple of points. One is about offsets and one is about biogas. So on offsets, first of all, I think perhaps the most important thing going on here is the demand-side impact. I think this has been brought up a couple of times, right? This is effectively a form of a carbon tax. And so regardless of what you do with the revenue, by raising the price, you change the market. And so I think that, you know, to the extent that we can impose a carbon tax within the constraints that the Constitution of California puts on us, you know, it's a relatively clever way to do that. The second is about the sort of supply side. So, you know, Palo Alto is, you know, well-known as being the home of some major VCs. So one way I think about offsets is it turns the city effectively into a VC for funding carbon reduction around the world. So global warming is a global problem. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, local initiatives and whatnot, but we know that the effect of carbon is felt globally, right? The major impacts of this are not necessarily in the United States, they're in other countries that have low-lying regions that are going to totally sink into the ocean due to our emissions. So us funding the reduction of carbon elsewhere in the world is a useful thing for us to be doing with our money to solve the problem globally. And as a relatively wealthy community, I think it's something that we should be doing, especially when you look at the timelines, right? So it may not be the case that there are shovel-ready projects in the city of Palo Alto, which we can reinvest our capital in around things like electrification. And so in the interim, while we figure out what those projects are, spending that money elsewhere where there are shovel-ready projects that we can have an impact on tomorrow rather than two years from now seems like a pretty good use of our money. And those four cents per therm can be redirected in, you know, two or three years when there are projects towards local initiatives, and I'm totally supportive of that. And the final point is around biogas. So I think it's important with things like this to look at the net energy and the EROI. So I'm not super familiar with the details of biogas, but just to point out a hypothetical example, you know, if there was a huge demand for biogas, you could imagine that it would actually incentivize the production of more cows in order to collect the methane that they emit, right? And the production of those cows could consume yet more carbon to feed them and to produce all of the, you know, subsidiary materials that goes into, you know, generating that methane. And so I think in all of these kinds of things, it's important to look at the total energy chain that goes into the production of these things. And so I don't actually know how it all nets out with biogas. I know in biodiesel, for example, it doesn't necessarily come out favorably. It's mostly a subsidy for the agriculture industry. So I think it's important when we look at things like that to sort of read below, read into the details to understand the final impact. Thank you.
Mike Danaher, to be followed by our final speaker, Craig Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Mike Danaher. I'm vice chair of the UAC. We have discussed this several times. So I feel like a common group of Warrior fans are arguing about which player they like best.
And Mike, if you're representing the UAC, you get more time.
Okay, no, I'm going to be very brief, but, I mean, we're all on the same team, same Climate Action Club, and I have affection and respect for everybody who is working towards the same goal. My philosophy in the UAC is when we want the biggest bang for the buck, we want the biggest carbon reduction we can per dollar and that we should apply that consistently. And I think part of Palo Alto's leadership is showing how other communities can do the same. And if we opt for the Neiman Marcus Plan, we're not showing leadership that's going to be followed by many other communities. On offsets, I don't agree with people who dismiss offsets. They are direct reductions in emissions, and they are often the biggest bang for the buck, and we should do that. I don't oppose electrification efforts, but I would oppose, for example, an electrification initiative that costs 100 times per unit of carbon saved relative to other things. I think we need to get the biggest bang for the buck. So that's why I'm supportive of this and not at all against pursuing or investigating more electrification, but the proposals or the analysis we've seen at the UAC shows many of those initiatives are very expensive relative to what you save. That's all. And that's wishes to all my fellow Warriors fans.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Craig Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor Burt, council members. I am Craig Lewis, the executive director of the Clean Coalition, and I have worked with most everybody here at the DIAS over the years. And the Clean Coalition is very focused on local renewables and local solutions. We've worked here in Palo Alto to help design the Feed-In Tariff Program, which is, you know, to get local renewables. We were hired to design the RFP to get solar on top of the city-owned parking structures. We have been hired by the Office of Emergency Services to help design a solar emergency microgrid at Coverly Community Center, which you'll hear more about hopefully in the not-too-distant future. But with all that said, I think we need to take advantage of this moment. There's been a lot of work to put a very creative policy forward, and it's a policy, frankly, that the Clean Coalition will take to other communities to model. We're not going to have the same council in a month or two from now, and I think we need to take advantage of the leadership that we have in Mayor Burt and the council members we have sitting here today. I've worked with Ed Schicata, and I'm thrilled that he's leading the Utilities Department now. I trust that he will do a very diligent job at finding local solutions. Now, with all the commentary that came before me, it did occur to me that there is something that I think we could do, that the council could do tonight, in addition to voting what the staff has recommended, and that is to take a portion of the funds that will be collected and allocate those on a best-efforts basis. I don't know the legal ramifications of Prop 26, but I do know that there's a, I think, a universal desire to get the money spent locally. I didn't hear any dissent to that. And at the same time, I heard that we need to stay within a certain budgetary constraint, and that's been set, and I think there was a fair level that was set. And we want to get to zero net emissions, right? So we want to get to zero net emissions within a certain budget, and we want to try our best to get local spending. So let's put one more, let's put, you know, one more condition onto that list and say, let's try for 25% of the spend at the launch of the program to have that money spent locally while maintaining the other conditions, keeping within the 10 cents per therm and making sure that we still maintain zero net emissions. So that's the one idea that I will add on to the, into the mix, but at the very least, I encourage you to support the proposal before you, hopefully with that one additional idea mixed in. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll return to the council for discussion and a motion. Councilmember Wolbach.
First, I also want to thank Jane and everybody else on staff who's worked really hard on this, and thank you, everybody from the public who came out to speak. We definitely hear some disagreement about the best way to move forward to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Palo Alto. What's really awesome is that we're having a debate about how best to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Palo Alto, and I'm really proud of that. I think it's, I just want to take a second to remark that we're much ahead of many other communities and sadly ahead of where our incoming national administration may be. And actually, on that note, I do want to point, I think it was alluded to by some of the public, that the Trump administration is not going to pay dairy farmers in Iowa to reduce the methane emissions from their cows. The Trump administration is just not going to do that. We can pay them to do that. That's the idea of offsets. And there was some discussion about this at the Finance Committee, and I understand that there's a, maybe a legitimate concern that offsets aren't fully priced and that we still aren't fully capturing the price of greenhouse gas emissions, including methane. But it's a step in the right direction, and anything we can do to price greenhouse gas emissions to acknowledge those externalized costs, I think is important. I mean, ultimately, the underlying political economy driver that has encouraged and led to climate change is that since the start of the Industrial Revolution, we haven't priced greenhouse gas emissions, and we've allowed it, all of us, to externalize those costs. And so a step in that direction is a positive step, as I see it. I respectfully don't understand how taking this positive step in any way inhibits taking further steps, how pricing methane prevents us from pursuing electrification or efficiency in our system or efficiency in homes. And part of what we're trying to do here is, you know, give staff the direction, the encouragement, the leeway to investigate just how can we spend these funds. We're not sure yet, but we're looking to investigate, can we spend rate funds on system improvements, you know, to look for fugitive emissions at joints, et cetera? Can we spend it on improvements in homes? Could we even spend it on electrification in homes and other properties owned by rate payers? And that's the goal here. And also the concern that this is taking money out of our community. Again, the focus here is to prioritize local offsets, either that exist now or that may exist in the future. And, you know, the question of whether, you know, whether we can trust that the offsets are well-accredited. We are using California Air Resources for CARB standards. We are looking to them to evaluate offset programs, and as we discussed at the Finance Committee, that's probably the best standard round, at least in our area, that's accessible to us. If there's a better standard, I'd love to hear it, and they have continued to improve over time, and I expect they will continue to improve in the future. With that commentary, I'd like to move forward with the recommendation at hand. Yeah, I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Which recommendation?
Okay, did you want to speak any further to the motion?
Yeah, so let's go with the, actually, let me clarify. Let's go with the clarified recommendation, except to not prefer offsets from California. Because if we can provide incentive to, again, to Iowa farmers to do a better job, we can do that through our money in a way that unfortunately Washington DC is probably not going to be as aggressive about. It will have a small impact, but it's something.
Okay.
I still do want to emphasize the priority for local, as in Palo Alto offsets.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for their work on this. I was really happy with the direction the Finance Committee took, and I thought it was very thoughtful, and it was a good outcome. I understand the concerns that carbon-free Palo Alto have, and again, I would say, though I would associate my thoughts with Sandra Slater's comments, which I thought were excellent. In looking at this, we need to find a way forward, and I think there's a first step in thinking about this. Buying the offsets and having a carbon-neutral portfolio on gas is the right way to go. And I don't think that takes away from the efforts that we need to think about this, of how we're going to look at this issue long-term, but I think right now we have something that we can do that's positive, and we should do it right now. So that's why I support this. I did have a question for staff. So when I read this, it looks to me like we go ahead and we spend four cents to five cents roughly to go and do the offsets, at which point there's, you know, five cents left in possibly going up to a 10 cent per therm issue. Within this motion, is staff going to come back after thinking about it and analyzing it and say themselves, if we were to use that five cents to get the most bang for the buck to move us forward, what would that look like? Is that included in this motion? I thought it was, but I, but it's not necessarily clear, so I...
And just to be clear, you mean the extra five cents up to using the full 10 cents? Even if we get carbon neutrality from four or five cents, staff's going to look into spending a full 10 cents?
No, if you don't mind, Pat, I'd like to... So, okay. So that's my question, is are you going to go analyze that, or do we need to add into the motion a six, which is analyze the best way to use the additional five cents? And I don't want to necessarily say we have to use it. I mean, it maybe not makes sense using it, but analyze possibilities of how we would reduce greenhouse gas emissions relating to gas portfolio using the additional possible five cents. I mean, I'm looking for staff's thoughts on that.
Well, our thought, what we were trying to clarify is if it only costs four or five cents, that's all we would spend, we couldn't spend more than 10. We don't know what the price of offsets will do over time. I mean, it sounds like we're going to come back relatively soon anyway with a potential different plan or maybe different options to review after we get more information. This is kind of like the carbon-neutral electric plan where council had a rate cap of .15 cents a kilowatt hour, and it cost us less than .5. So we didn't spend up to the cap, but that's all we could spend. And so that's what we were viewing the 10 cents as, is the cap, but we would only spend what we needed. In the beginning, at the current price of offsets, we believe that to be around four cents.
Okay, go ahead.
But let me add to what Jane said. I mean, that also included in the plan is if a local project is identified and if it seemed like that local project needed additional money more than the market price of an offset, then we would come back to council and get some sort of decision about how much of a premium you would want to spend on a local project. And also E included in there, that we would be looking at other potential non-offset options. And if we identify those, and if it was more expensive, we would come back and explore those with you as well.
So E really covers that, then?
I think it does.
It does, in particular, as we've...
It does, in particular, as we've spoken informally about, soon after the first of the year, hopefully, we were hoping to get it off the ground sooner, but after first of the year, beginning a strategic plan for the department overall. And this would certainly be a cornerstone element of looking at the role of the utility with respect to carbon reduction and recognizing the synergy of having the multiple utilities under one roof.
All right. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to offer a couple of amendments, and they're really around giving some better clarity about what E is intending. So it would be to direct staff to return with methods... Or, excuse me...
So would that be a six, because it's starting at one?
Yeah. Or five, you mean? Must be a five. Direct staff to return with a set of programs to reduce national, natural gas usage within Palo Alto, including electric appliances, and streamline permitting for such appliances, and potential programs to reduce fugitive natural gas emissions indoor and outdoor. And then a six that would restrict purchase of offsets in, from landfill natural gas to exclude landfills that receive recyclable organic materials that would be excluded from landfills under best practices. So if I, well, let me see if it's acceptable, I could speak to it and explain a little more, or, or seek acceptance first.
I think so. I don't know if, City Clerk, I'm not sure if I caught the second part of that. Would you mind restating it?
So we would, this is actually aligned with what we did on our renewable portfolio a number of years ago of saying, basically, we're not going to purchase natural gas from, harvested from landfills that are accepting materials that shouldn't go into landfills. That's the thrust of it. So I can work on the wording to capture that.
I, I'm inclined to support it. I am wondering whether Mayor Burt, how broad number five is intended to be, and whether, I just want, I want to have a sense of how broad that is, but I'm inclined to support it.
Oh, and I, I should have included within five, a reference to within the constraints of Prop 26.
I think that I'm okay with that. So, so I'm willing to accept that.
So, and, pardon me?
So I would, I'd want you to change...
You need your mic.
I, I'd prefer, I feel more comfortable, you say, we're thinking straight to Prop to return with a set of options as opposed to programs. I think programs are a little more...
That's fine.
A little more fleshed out before staff goes and does a lot of work.
Okay, I said, fine. Okay. We don't want to just go exploring. We want to actually have you come back with a set of alternatives. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I support the motion. I think it's essential that we get it underway and start as soon as possible. Two, I think it's important that we acknowledge that we don't have all the answers, and that this is a process that we'll go through. Number three, I think the reference to Prop 26 is essential, that a lot of what we can do here, the ideas that the public was sharing with us, are dependent upon interpretations of 26. So that's something that we need to have as an involving item. The other thing is offsets. We're going to start with offsets because they are economically efficient. But I'm concerned a little bit that the notion of offsets are a little too dependent on the robust definitions given by the California Air Resources Board. I know there's three or four references in the text to, oh, we're taking the offsets from them, and they are good and, and meaningful. I would just, as an example, point to the clash between the California Air Resources Board and the Los Angeles Public Works Department over the last couple of years. It's about the issue of not biogas, but conversion technologies, which I think go well beyond the definitions of what biogas are now. And there has been, I guess, pointing to a rash of new technologies that deal with municipal waste in a very, very different and more effective way. And one of the outcomes of that dialogue between Los Angeles and the Air Resources Board is the, there was a conference a couple of months ago at Berkeley Law School, Center for Law, Energy, and the Environment, and they came out with a paper on the results of that called Wasting Opportunities: How to Secure Environmental and Clean Energy Benefits from Municipal Solid Waste. And I think that's an example, maybe, of somewhere in there, there will be new technologies emerging, I think fairly soon, that could have a big impact on the choices and options we take. So rather than just rely on the current wording coming out of the Air Resources Board to anticipate some of the changes on what offsets might be and how effective they are that are likely to be coming over the next couple of years.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I support the motion. I think there's a lot of, a lot of good things here, and I appreciate staff's clarified recommendation. I think my colleagues have said it, I agree with what they've said. This is just the first step. It's not, we're not stopping here. That's important to emphasize. I do think the sentiment was that we prefer local offsets. And B3 here, we talk about local offset projects, but I'd like to offer an amendment that we would modify B3 to say that we prefer local offset projects and return to council to determine. So at the very beginning of that sentence, just make it clear that the preference is local offset projects, if they exist. So again, David, that would be prefer local offset projects and return to council. Keep the rest of it.
Yeah, I would actually agree with that. Yeah, if you guys identify them, definitely move forward with them right away. And only need to come back to us if you need to charge more money. Or if you need to spend more, rather.
So what's the language? Keep, keep everything there, and just at the very beginning of that sentence, say, prefer local offset projects and return to council to determine. Blah, blah, blah. There you go. That's good with me. And then the third one, my last point, and I'm not going to propose this as a motion, but I think we really need to start talking about what the end game is here. I'd like to see staff consider the future of the gas utility and suggest a strategy for maximizing it while it still has value. So as we start to shift customers away, it's going to get more and more expensive. I know we're very proud of, as a city, that we have all our own utilities, but we shouldn't let that get in the way of maybe getting rid of a utility that we don't want. And so I think it's time to start thinking about that. The longer we wait, the less value it's going to have.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, thank you, Councilmember DeBois. You took care of one of my things with your changes to number three. And so just a little tiny cleanup on numbers, on six. I think it should be landfills that receive recyclable or organic materials. Now, that's just a little cleanup, but thank you, Councilmember DeBois.
No, it's actually, in this context, inorganic recyclables don't matter. They're not producing methane.
True. Okay, thank you.
I certainly support the motion. I am not going to go in and tweak it. I want to go off on a slightly different tangent, because yesterday's New York Times, and I'm going to guess a lot of you have read it, which is called Cashing In on Climate Change. If you haven't read it, I suggest you do. It was in the review section. But what I think is fascinating is, as they put, as Henry Paulson recently put it, "The greenhouse gas crisis won't burst like the housing bubble of 2008 because climate change is more subtle and cruel." And I thought that was just fascinating. It goes on to mention later, the number of places that are now switching away from fossil fuels as part of their retirement programs, whether it's California State Teachers or New York State, State's Retirement Plan in general. What is intriguing about this, and I'll, I will finish with this, but it's worth noting that business interests and President-elect Trump sells himself as a consummate businessman were integral to making the Paris Deal happen in the first place. They realize environmental stability is absolutely at the base of financial stability. I think that is such a fabulous sentence. And lastly, discussing China, it talks about China aims to build charging stations to power 5 million electric cars, I know Bruce Hodge will like that one, by 2020. Now, that's absolutely fascinating. If you're looking at this as where's the rest of the world going, this is an intriguing article. So remember what this is saying, is this is good economics, not just good for the planet, it's actually good for our economic future, which is something we really haven't discussed tonight, and I think it's important to put that on the record. And with that, I am supporting the motion.
Great. So I, I see we have no more comments. I'll just echo what some of the speakers had said, which was that, given our national circumstance and where we may be headed on federal climate change protection, we're really sort of back where we were before the Paris Accord, where initiatives of local and regional and state governments and private sector are going to be the primary drivers for the time being in the U.S. on climate protection. And Palo Alto has been a leader on this, and really, the, the initiatives we take do have highly leveraged impacts, as others are trying to figure out what's over the horizon as they become electrified, and then what's next, as we're struggling with that. So I think this is a great initiative. I want to thank everybody involved, from the citizens, activists on this, to the UAC and our staff, and, and look forward to the next steps here. So please vote on the board. That passes unanimously. Great. Thank you all. Moving right along. Our next item is approval of an agreement with the County of Santa Clara with respect to a tobacco retailer permit program and discussion and potential adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.14 to restrict smoking in multifamily housing.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. Phil Volble, Public Works. We don't have a slideshow for you. We've sort of been through this mostly with the Policy and Services Committee, and now it's back to the full council. The item has two parts. The first part relates to a program to permit and restrict the sales of tobacco products. And then the second part is restrictions on smoking in multifamily units and in the common areas for multifamily. So I won't take too much time, but just to divide those two, divide up into those two parts and to come back to the first part first, we've, are presenting you with what we think is a real innovative partnership with our county to have the county run the program for tobacco retailer licensing in Palo Alto. This would be the first city in the county to be operated this way. The county operates a program in unincorporated areas of the county currently, and there is precedent in other counties, but not ours, for the county running a program in a city. So we're very excited about this agreement with the county. And I think Nicole, although I didn't have a chance to find her, is Nicole Cox here? Yep, there's Nicole. Sure, come on up here, Nicole. Nicole is our county representative, the only county representative tonight, I think.
We have one more.
One more. Who else is here?
Joyce Villalobos.
Okay. Joyce Villalobos is here from the county as well. So they can probably field in-depth questions even better than I can about the agreement. But basically, the city will adopt the same ordinance that the county has. And there's, there's one sort of error in what we have in the staff report. We say that in December, the county will be adopting a revised ordinance. Actually, they've already done that. So the county ordinance exists, and we'll, we didn't have time to catch up with it because it's fairly late-breaking change, from our perspective, anyway. So in, we say here in February, we'll come back with an actual ordinance. Tonight, we just have the agreement with the county for you, and we need to match our ordinance changes to the county's. And that's actually part of the agreement. The county sort of doesn't want to mess with us unless we're having the exact same agreement that, exact same ordinance that they have, so that their inspectors and their team don't have to remember where they are and are the details different. And we understand that, and we agree to that. So we'll be putting their ordinance sort of in our numeric system, but the, the facts or the requirements will be identical to the county. And then when, if, in the future, the county changes theirs, we'll, after a period of time, you know, we'll have to come back and modify ours as well. But the county isn't expecting any near-term changes. But the county isn't expecting any near-term changes in their program, so this should, should last for a while. As far as enforcement goes, the county will enforce most of the provisions of the license permit, and they'll do inspections. The exception to that is the underage part of it, where the only way to really catch that in action is through a, sending out an underage person from the police department, and our police department will do that. Once a year, they will send an undercover person out who is underage and look for violations of the now 21-year-old or 21-year age limitation on, on purchasing. So with that exception, the county will enforce the other provisions. An example is there's a new 1,000-foot requirement from a school. So they'll make sure that that type of thing is adhered to. Let's see, what else to tell you about that? I think that, that's really the big picture on the thing. The county will take, the city would write a citation if the, if we find, if our police department finds a underage violation, the city would write the citation, but the county would follow up with formal enforcement action. Should there be a hearing, the, the county would be responsible for that. So there's, you'll see in the agreement and the attachment to the agreement, how that sort of works back and forth, and there's quite a bit of detail in there, but that's the big picture. So that's half of it. And then the other half is this restriction on smoking in multifamily units, and it's really completely separate. So there's, the agreement with the county doesn't cover this, it's really a, a separate thing. So the multifamily unit is purely a Palo Alto action. The Policy and Services Committee directed that we bring this back to the full council as an ordinance, as a revised ordinance. We had a previous ordinance, we've been back and forth. We made the changes suggested by the Policy and Services Committee, and we're now bringing back the ordinance for the multi-unit restrictions, both in the common area and the actual living unit. We're bringing that back to you tonight. You'll see qualifiers in there. We do not have the resources as a city, none of our departments do, to enforce those requirements. In part, it's a resource question, but it's also in part a sort of an activity, a function question. How do you actually, how would you actually go about enforcing this? So we have sort of two problems, but the biggest one is really resources. And I stress that because it's not just resources for what you might think of as enforcement, but it's also resources for outreach, for answering inquiries, for following up on complaints, all the things that might arise once we put something like this on the books, once we create an expectation of greater activity. We just don't have the resources to conduct that greater activity that might be expected. So I, I want to underscore that for you. And I think it was Vice Mayor Scharf that put it well last at the committee meeting, and several other you possibly also, saying, there's still a benefit to putting this on the books. There's a social norming, there's a precedent-setting benefit and not to be discounted. So without discounting those benefits, though, I did need to underscore that there really would be no enforcement, there would be no follow-up, there would be no complaint investigation, and there would not even be any substantial public outreach on this. So that's the second part, and I think I'll stop there, and Nicole and I can answer questions or whatever your pleasure is.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
Mr. Mayor, would you be willing to accept a motion at this point? I realize it's pretty.
We, we have to hear.
You really want to get into questions, right?
No, we, first, we, we now have questions, we're going to have to, need to hear from the public.
Sorry.
Okay.
I sometimes forget the, the protocol. Thank you.
Okay.
Then I will have a motion.
Councilmember DuBois.
Just two, two quick questions, I guess. How many tobacco retailers do we have? I think, I think we said something like 30?
There's 29 currently.
29, okay. And then are the, the fees that are in the county ordinance, which I don't think we saw much of before, that this ordinance looks pretty new, right? Are, are those cost-neutral fees basically?
Yes, all the fees are based on cost recovery of the administration and enforcement of the tobacco retail program.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I have just a handful of questions. I mean, this may sound odd coming from somebody who is so supportive of healthy cities, but I just wonder if we're maybe going down a path of unintended consequences. And what makes me wonder that is, you just said that the fees are cost recovery, so when I was reading through the staff report, the brief staff report, it says that there is a permitting of retailers collect permit application, annual permit fees, currently 340 and 425 respectively. So does that mean in the first year, you're paying an application fee of, fee of 340 and a permitting fee of 425? So the first year, you're paying $765?
I'll want to double-check that with our environmental health department. It's been a number of years since we set this up originally, and I just want to make sure that we, I believe what we did originally was charge that application fee to set up the system, get the businesses into the administrative system. And I don't recall if they then had to also pay the annual fee at that same time, or if that came a year following the, following the renewal fee. So I would want to clarify that with our environmental health, but I do believe that that's, that would be the case.
Okay. I didn't, well, we didn't have the minutes from Policy and Services, so was there outreach to these 29 retailers?
We did not do outreach to the, to them, no.
I think that's a big missing piece here, it seems like. What would be the difference between? Well, let me ask two questions. One is, so the state has already put in place the law that rages, raises the age from 18 to 21. How does the city regulate that? Or do we? Or do we get complaints?
Well, that's a very new piece of legislation.
Well, let's just, let's just go back to 18. Were there, because that is, the 21 is new, so let's just go back to 18. Were there complaints or violations?
I'm not aware of complaints. There could have been some. I, I suspect there were a very limited number to our police department. Over the years, they have done sting operations of the type I described that we would do in the future. In the last year, I don't believe we did any.
Okay. So you're talking of not having any staff to do code enforcement for the apartments. By the way, my issues are with number one and number two. They're not with number three. But with staffing, you know, the undercover sting operations, I don't know how that we would have staff to do that either, basically.
The police department has committed to do one round of those per year. So those resources, they believe they can find, but that's it.
Okay, all right. Was there any, well, if there wasn't outreach to these 29 retailers, was there any extrapolation of what kind of a financial impact on the business these kinds of fees would have on their ability? And the reason I'm asking this too is like, I don't know of maybe one place that sells only tobacco project, products. Pretty much every place else that I know about, and just to be clear, I'm not a smoker, but pretty much every place I know about that sells tobacco products also sells any number of other, other things, like, you know, magazines or wine or, you know, whatever. So I'm just wondering what these fees, what kind of an impact they would have on their ability to continue business. Was there any kind of extrapolation of that impact?
Well, we, we felt it would not be significant, so as Nicole pointed out, we think that in the first year, it could be $340 plus $425 for a total of roughly $800. But in subsequent years, it would be roughly $400, and we did not feel that was going to drive anybody out of business.
Based on? And the reason I ask the question is because, I mean, we heard people, you know, retailers talking about the, to some of them, the impact of a, and it may sound silly, but retail is not the easiest, you know, brick and mortar business to be in these days, about even paying a $50 business license registration fee. I'm not going to defend or, you know, not that, but those were comments we actually got from people. So it seems maybe is it a little cavalier to think that $340 or $425 is not a significant impact to these retailers?
Well, I would point out, we discussed this several times at the Policy and Services Committee. It's been noticed a number of times. We haven't had that comment.
Isn't it typical process and practice, though, to do outreach? Especially when you've only got 29 businesses, it seems like. Anyway, I'll, I'll stop there, but you hear my concerns.
Okay. So we will now go to members of the public. We have three speakers. Our first speaker is Don Tran, to be followed by Mike Amidi.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and councilmembers. My name is Don Tran, and I am the Community Development and Health Policy Associate at the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. I'm here on behalf of the Leadership Group to offer our support on the adoption of a locally-based tobacco retail license program and to offer our comments on the consideration of a multifamily smoking restriction ordinance. The Leadership Group, we represent over 400 of Silicon Valley's most respected employers in various public policies, issues that impact the quality of life within the Silicon Valley. Collectively as a whole, Leadership Group members provide one of three private sector jobs within the valley. The Leadership Group, we support the adoption of a locally-based tobacco retail license program, as it will regulate and enforce and encourage responsible tobacco retail practices. A locally-based program will also allow for local jurisdictions to play an impactful role in determining what would be best for their respective communities. Ultimately, we believe that the program, as demonstrated in other cities, will help drastically reduce the rate of tobacco accessibility and also usage amongst minors. Regarding the consideration of smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinances within Palo Alto, there are many negative health outcomes and dangers associated with second-hand smoke exposure. Due to the close living quarters of these multi-unit developments, we believe that residents within these developments are at a higher risk of second-hand smoke exposure. Thus, it's important to consider restrictions on units and common areas of these developments. Many current landlords in other Santa Clara County cities have already voluntarily adopted smoke-free regulations within their properties, so it's something that should be considered. The Leadership Group, we're definitely committed to, deeply committed to advocating for public health issues that promote health equity. We applaud the county and city staff for their work on these ordinances. We also want to thank the council for their leadership and continued dedication towards the health and well-being of residents within the city of Palo Alto. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Amidi, to be followed by our final speaker. I'm sorry, I can't make it out, but Ron, I believe, something.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mike Amidi. I own the Valero Station at 705 San Antonio Road. I submitted a letter last week that spelled out some of my concern with this ordinance. I would like to take this opportunity to highlight one of my main issue, and that is the ability to sell my business and transfer, transfer my tobacco license in the future. Our station is located within 500 feet of another station, based on the Santa Clara County ordinance. The first person to sell their business or even transfer the business to a family member loses the right to sell tobacco. The value of my store seriously will be diminished without inability to sell tobacco. It is important that the right to sell tobacco, included flavored tobacco, is extended to the future owner. My wife and I have invested a lot of money into this gas station, and we have owned it for very few months. And we were not reached out by anybody regarding this ordinance being in effect. We did not invest blindly here. We researched and planned before investing here. We knew all of the rules and regulation before we invested, and the city approved our station knowing we would sell tobacco. Banning most of the tobacco category goes beyond simple regulation change that we could not have anticipated. It is significant change to the rules since tobacco is one of the few things we are able to sell in our kiosks. It is unreasonable to force us to remove a majority of tobacco product from the shelf, as you likely know, the city already limits size of the kiosk that we have. And the grocery item, they can be sold at gas station. Had we known the city intended to ban flavored tobacco, we could, we would not have invested here. I also wanted to point out that the state law requires that all tobacco is behind the counter, meaning it is not accessible to customer of any age. All of the tobacco laws are already enforced by FDA, BOE, and the county health department. They regularly conduct youth decoy operation, and we have never failed a tobacco compliance survey in my 30 years that I have other sites. So what is the purpose of this? If I'm licensed by the state, I'm in compliance, and I do, don't sell tobacco illegally. Why am I being punished? I urge you to exempt existing businesses from new flavored tobacco sales restriction. My last point is that I think it is highly irregular for the city to sign an agreement with the county that blindly agrees to future changes to this ordinance. I don't know anyone who would agree to that. At the same time, you are putting Palo Alto businesses at the mercy of the county that clearly disregard retailers. We generate taxes for the city, we provide jobs, and we legally sell tobacco. I hope that you will support us and vote against an agreement with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron, and I can't make out the last name.
Tate. T-A-T-E.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Tate.
I do everything on the computer, so I can't write anymore. Anyway, you know, I'm, I'm anti-tobacco. I don't smoke tobacco. I don't drink alcohol. I don't drink coffee. I don't drink diet drinks. I'm a vegetarian. So, you know, for the methane gas deal, if you wanted to, to outlaw meat, we could cut this down very fast. I don't eat anything with ears or eyes. So, anyway. But the tobacco issue is anytime you put taxes or you put restrictions on something, it is not going to slow it down. I'm, I, I just, I just don't think it is. Look at the gasoline tax. You have the huge gasoline tax. We pump 450,000 gallons of gas at our San Antonio station a month, and we're filled up with Teslas, not Teslas, we're filled with Ferraris, Maseratis, you know, SUVs. So the gas, the tax doesn't do anything for it at all. I agree that we should, we should try to deter people using any form of tobacco. Worse than that, we should deter everyone from drinking a count of alcohol. That's even worse than tobacco. But that doesn't seem to be an issue because it's kind of a popular thing for people to do. But anyway, anytime the government gets involved in policing things, it, it just never works out, because you're having to peep in people's houses to find out if they're smoking inside their house. And I agree, I mean, either the Las Gatas, actually, and we have anti-smoking rules where you can't smoke within so many feet of a restaurant. So you see people standing around 10, 15 feet away in groups smoking cigarettes. It doesn't, doesn't slow them down. And I don't think that the taxes on cigarettes, which keeps rising, has really deterred smoking at all. which keeps rising, has really deterred smoking at all. But for businesses in Palo Alto, such as the station we bought, we relied on a certain amount of retail business, which some of it is tobacco. And all of our tobacco is behind the counter, you have to come in, you have to escort, it's not out in display. So I really, really suggest that you don't follow the county's rules and hop on board with this, because it's not, you're not going to be able to police it, which is, which, the more rules we have that you can't police, we have enough rules and regulations as it is. But in any event, I do, I do applaud you on wanting to make certain that we've cut down on smoking, especially with young people, but it doesn't seem to be working, it's still on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Mark Prebski.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. My wife and I moved here a year and a half ago from New York City, Manhattan. We're thrilled to be living here. We live in a multifamily dwelling, and it's supposed to be non-smoking. Unfortunately, the landlord has allowed somebody who is an incredibly high smoker to keep his apartment to live, and the result is that there's a lot of secondhand smoke in the building. And we're prevented from doing much about that, because there are no ordinances here. And I think that they would be, they would be amenable to doing more if such ordinances took place. We have a young child who's exposed to secondhand smoke that there's no way of preventing from coming through the building. So we urge you to pass this multi-unit, non-smoking provision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now return to the council. Councilmember Niss.
So, once again, having, thank you again for, for the public for coming, especially from SVLG, that was very appreciated. So, one never wins a popularity contest, when we're talking about tobacco, whether we're talking about selling it, or whether we're talking about policing it, or whether we're talking about it in multi-unit buildings. I was at the county when we actually passed this, and I remember a number of times that people were extraordinarily unhappy with it. I feel very strongly about this. I was just with my family over the weekend, and we were discussing that all of the five children that my family had are the recipients, or the victims of secondhand smoke. I grew up with my father in the station wagon with all the windows up, and he smoked. And many of you probably had that same experience. And each one of us has some residual from that. I am so sympathetic with the man, and I didn't catch your name exactly, but with the man in the apartment house where someone is smoking. Because the smoke literally does, it, it goes out through the windows, it comes in through the door, it's, it's, I agree with you, it's incredibly unpleasant. So I certainly hesitate in moving, in moving this motion for, for those reasons, as I said. No popularity contest ever was won with, with reducing or discussing cutting down the use of tobacco. However, I am very enthusiastic about this, it worked well at the county, and thank you so much for being willing to oversee that within our city. I really appreciate it. I did make a motion, yes.
I didn't hear that done. So you're moving the staff recommendation?
Yes, I'm moving the staff recommendation.
Okay, that's the motion, thank you. All right, did you want to speak further to your motion?
I think I've spoken enough.
I think so too, yeah. Vice Mayor Scharf.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Nicole and the county for all their hard work, and actually for working with our staff on this. And also thank our staff. I know it's been a long progress, and you guys have spent a lot of time thinking this through, and coming up with this, what's before us tonight, and it's been a, it's been a long haul. So, and I also think it's one of the more innovative partnerships, frankly, between cities and county. And the county's actually going to take a huge burden off of us by doing the enforcement for all of this. And I think we're going to become a model with this partnership for the rest of the cities in the region as they move towards this. We all made healthy cities one of our priorities this year. And this is what healthy cities means, it means passing a tobacco retailer ordinance and moving forward with multifamily housing. We won't be the first city, in fact, there's a number of other cities that have already outlawed it in multifamily housing. So we're actually playing a little catch-up there, as opposed to leading on this. Whereas joining the county and doing this innovative partnership, I think we're showing that we can be a leader in this. And I think this is a really important thing to do, and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Just to follow up to one of the commenters, I guess it's the county that has 18-70, 18370, that the retailer loses the right to sell cigarettes if a new person obtains ownership within 500 feet. Now, as he pointed out, that's a new rule that's come in that has a major impact on life savings, is, does this make sense?
Well, the county has a non-transferability clause in our tobacco retail permit, so if there is a change in ownership, the grandfathering provision that the businesses had is lost as a result. The reason for doing this, the county has placed limits on having any new businesses be located near schools, and also a goal of reducing overall the number of tobacco outlets near schools. So that's one way that the county has looked at doing that. Same thing for reducing density of tobacco outlets, so that's where the 500-foot provision in our county ordinance comes into play. And the reason behind that is that there are studies that show when there are more tobacco outlets and more access near schools, there's higher smoking rates amongst youth, and that's also true when you have a higher number of tobacco outlets in a given geographic area, high density. And so it is one of the provisions in our ordinance, so...
Yeah, what it hits here is gas stations near freeway entrance, where you have a number of stations on a corner. So it's not kids getting out of school, but drivers. And it seems, you know, it hits a family ownership pretty hard.
Well, as a practical matter, in Palo Alto, I'm trying to think of an instance where within 500 feet, we have two gas stations. It might be the corner of San Antonio and, not Middlefield, but Charleston.
Middlefield, yeah.
With that exception, I really can't think of where there were two currently within 500 feet.
Two gas stations across the street.
Two places selling tobacco, period, but yeah, gas stations.
Yeah, Middlefield and San Antonio. It sounds like an ordinance to kill off gas stations. Is there any way of getting exceptions?
Well, we're committed, we've committed to adopting the exact same ordinance that the county has.
Right, is there a way through the county ordinance?
There's not, currently.
We could explore the degree to which there's a, you know, are those actually franchises and family-owned, or are they part of a corporate? I'm thinking, I think the ones at San Antonio and Charleston, at least one of them is a corporate ownership, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, this is at Middlefield in San Antonio.
Yeah, maybe it's Middlefield, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think it would be helpful if you could, if you could check on that and see if it could make a difference.
So I just pulled up on Google Maps, in Palo Alto, there are two locations where there are stations within that distance. One is on the corner of San Antonio and Char, East Charleston, and the other is San Antonio and Middlefield.
So we were both right?
Yeah.
They're both entries to commute routes.
We'll check out both to see what the ownership is.
So, but checking it out, how would that impact our action tonight?
Well, I wouldn't recommend it impact your decision, we would just get back to you with that as information, so you would know.
Okay, Councilmember Wolbach.
Actually, Councilmember Schmidt identified my area of concern. Again, this is Section 18-370E of the county ordinance. I don't agree with the 500-foot location requirement, I don't think it's appropriate. I heard the arguments in favor of it, I just don't, don't think that that's sufficient to impose that prohibition.
Can you tell us?
It's, well, we, it's on page five of 13 of the county ordinance, which is one of the attachments in the late pack that we received.
And where?
And so it's in the middle of, where it says page five of 13 at the top, it's in the middle, E.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Sure. And so I'd also mention another location that's probably applicable, which is the 7-Eleven on Colorado and the Safeway right behind it. I'm not a fan of tobacco, I've never smoked a cigarette in my life, I have had a couple cigars, and I'll admit, and even, even smoked a hookah. But, you know, people have a right to do things that harm themselves, you know, and, you know, buying or selling tobacco isn't the same as using it, or smoking it, or smoking it in multifamily housing. So I'm very much in favor of prohibiting smoking in multifamily housing, and, you know, limiting the ability of one person to harm another through secondhand smoke. But telling people you can't gain access to something that only will hurt you, and you can't even buy it, is not something I'm in favor of. So I guess, let me just make sure I'm clear about a couple of things with what we're proposing.
Could I just address that one point, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with respect to it? So this 500-foot thing would, would kick in in two ways. One, if a new facility came along that wanted to locate within 500 feet of somebody else. Secondly, if there were a change of ownership of one of the two that were already. So it doesn't, it doesn't affect people who continue to own a business within 500 feet of somebody else.
I understand.
Okay.
But thank you for clarifying, yes, that's right. I, I fully appreciate that, and thank you for clarifying for everyone else. So let me be clear about a couple of things. If we were to adopt this, would the city then, sorry if I missed it, is the city going to be issuing the permits, or will the county be issuing all the permits?
The county.
Is it possible for us to ask the county to not enforce the 500-foot requirement for permits issued within Palo Alto?
Well, the way...
Just get that one, one line.
They, the county was very firm, and not just Nicole, not to blame it on her, but the, the whole county structure was very firm on this, there would have to be the exact same ordinance, and that's what we're agreeing to in the agreement, is to have the same exact requirements. I don't mean ordinance, I mean the agreement, in the agreement, we're committing to that.
Yeah, I think that might, yeah, that might sink part two for me.
Phil, can you, or someone point out, I see E, but I don't, I was trying to find the passage on the, the sale of the business trigger.
F.
Okay, got it. So let me, let me just jump in here. You're saying if we change a word of this, we can't get the county to enforce it?
Well, it's not so much a word, but, but that's a, that's a requirement. The requirement is on change of ownership, that the 500-foot thing would kick in, or new facility, the 500-foot thing would apply. And again, it's a policy issue for the county that it's part of, as Nicole said, their, frankly, their desire to restrict the number and the density of tobacco sales. So I guess you either agree with that, or you don't.
So, we might agree with it in principle. We might also see that there are a couple mechanisms to reduce it. One is attrition. We get gas stations that close up, because, and we, over time, we have fewer gas stations. We even have fewer grocery retail outlets. So that's an attrition. But that's different from a change in ownership restriction, that I don't know how much it would reduce the, the value of, the resale value of, of a, of a business. But I, I think that's a separate subset of how we, long-term, would go about reducing the number of tobacco sale sites. So, maybe, I'm sorry, is Nicole, is that right? If we struck F2, is that from our local ordinance? That just, we didn't add anything to the ordinance, it just meant that one aspect of what you would enforce would be excluded. Is there a big problem there?
Well, rather than put, pour a little Nicole on the spot, let me remind you, you're not actually adopting our ordinance tonight, that you're directing us to go back, and so you could direct us to, in the process of drafting our own ordinance, to work with the attorneys at the county, Nicole isn't in that office, and see what we could work out.
Okay. All right, Councilmember DeBois.
The other thing I would say on that same point is, there's two parts to it, one is change of ownership, and the other is a new facility. I think the new facility part of it is, is not going to happen, it's theoretical only. And the change of ownership thing, at least it's possible that would occur, but the new facility part of it really is, is not going to happen.
Right. Okay, Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, just to give a little perspective, this came to Policy and Services two or three times, I think over the last two years. I think I'm the only person that was in all those meetings over the two years.
So you're, okay.
And so just to summarize, I think we were attracted to the idea of the county enforcing this, and thank you for that. But I think it was always a discussion kind of to be had, and like, this kind of detail never really came to Policy and Services. I don't think we ever really saw this ordinance.
Or didn't talk about the 500-foot thing, no.
Right. So it's kind of a new thing that's popping up tonight. And I think the other thing we're agreeing to is to agree to all future changes to this ordinance, right?
Yes, it says that, and that is, would be our intent. However, on the other hand, if we fail strongly and didn't adopt it, then the county would be faced with a decision, would they curtail the program in our area, frankly, cutting off their nose despite their face, or would we just mush forward? So while it says that that's our intent, there's no explicit sanction for us should we fail to do that.
And I would just, I would just add to that, that the agreement that you're being asked to adopt tonight does allow the city to terminate the agreement, and the county as well. So if the county's program diverged significantly from the policy direction that the council was comfortable with, then...
But most likely, we would not even consider updates to the county ordinance, right? We would just continue this, if we sign onto this program and we have enforcement going on, would we necessarily even see county amendments and consider...
I'm sure our county partners would be willing to keep us updated of significant changes to the ordinance, and I don't know that any are contemplated, it's a fairly well-established program.
Right, so like I was saying earlier, they just made some changes, so that's why we thought the timing was good. They don't have any up their sleeve at the moment, and should they, they would tell us, and it would have to come back to you, and we could make the decision, as Molly said, we could make the decision not to make that change, and then the county could agree to discontinue, discontinue the agreement, or we could.
Right. I mean, we say it's well-established, there's some pretty significant recent changes for all kinds of things.
I didn't think of them as super significant, do you want to comment?
Okay, that's, that's okay. So I share the concern about the impact on selling a business, and I had a question, though, why does the city limit the sell, selling of food in groceries, in gas stations? It sounds like we limit pretty much what's actually can be sold. can be sold. I think I read it in letters, several letters, that they can only sell packaged snacks and not fresh food.
That's not a city. That would be a county health department thing.
Okay.
There are some health department rules about what you can sell.
Okay, so if it's not-
It's not a city.
I suggest, if the city was limiting, we might be able to loosen that up. So, again, Policy and Services, we did spend a lot of time talking about distance from schools, and we spent an awful lot of time talking about the multi-unit residences, and I think we asked staff to investigate whether filtering was even possible, came back and said it really wasn't. We had a lot of members of the community that spoke to us about secondhand smoke effects. And so, I think we were pretty, I think we were unanimous on that portion, part of the motion. I just wanted to point out that some of these other things are just new.
Okay, so I now see that we have some lights. People want to take another cut at it. Let's, oh, I thought you had, okay, okay. And, but either way, let me just say that if we do have any follow-up motions or anything, let's just be real focused and succinct. Councilmember Holman.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So, I was going to make, maybe it's probably simpler, just make a substitute motion, which is to adopt C, which was part of the staff recommendation, adopt C, and direct staff to outreach to the retailers and to return to council with options of a Palo Alto ordinance, or adoption of the county agreement.
Go ahead and speak to your motion.
Yeah, the first part of that was to adopt C. Adopt C. So, the reason is because things I mentioned earlier, just in the effort to be brief here, I raised some, to me, significant issues during the question portion of this. This other issue of resale ability, you know, whether it's enforced or not, it's still, it's on the books, so I can't imagine it wouldn't have a significant impact on somebody who's trying to sell their business, and that is interfering in the private property, certainly private property right, which the city can do, but I just, I have real concerns about the implications of that. So, I'll just stop there in the effort to be brief.
Okay, Councilmember Wolbach.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman, for proposing this. This addresses my major concern. Ultimately, what we're faced with in the recommendation was two very, very different policy initiatives, one relating to the sale of tobacco, and the other relating to the use of smoked tobacco. And I think we should take them up separately. I was on Policy and Services last year, and definitely did participate in the conversations of, some of the conversations about multifamily housing. I'm excited to pass that and move that forward. I think that's extremely important, but I think we need to do a little bit more work and think a little bit harder before we move forward with the other parts.
Okay, Councilmember Phil Seth? Okay, so you're good. Vice Mayor Scharf?
So, I'm not going to support the substitute motion. I think that it's really important, frankly, that we deal with issues like flavored tobacco, and which are the things that hook kids. You know, these are marketing ploys, basically, to get more and more younger people, because if you don't start smoking, I forget the age, you probably know, Nicole, by a certain age, you're really unlikely, do you know what it is?
Well, definitely before 26, when the brain stops developing, but typically, it's around 21.
And so, that's really what we need to do, is focus on how we don't get young people hooked. And really, what a tobacco ordinance like this does, is it protects children from getting hooked. And I mean, and young adults. I will say that 21 to 26 are obviously young adults. And so, I think it's really important that we do this. And I think that we, as a city, unless we want to spend the money, frankly, going through and enforcing this, I think that it's really great that we can partner with the county to have them do it. However, if the regular motion comes back, I think I would like to move the addition that we do delete F2, or have the staff work with, to delete F2, which is the part of the change of ownership in business, because that could have an impact, and I don't think that's really necessary in the enforcement. I think the county could probably accommodate us on something like that.
Councilmember Phil Seth, you now want to speak, okay.
You know, I think we're right to, we're right to really ponder and look at all the ramifications and the issues, the economics associated with this. But, I mean, the bottom line, the stuff kills people, and there's going to be an impact if we stop selling it, or reduce selling it. So, I think we ought to move forward, and I don't, I don't think I'm going to support the substitute motion.
Can I just clarify one thing about that motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the reason I said to have staff do outreach to the retailers and return to council with options, the things that Councilmember Scharf or Vice Mayor Scharf mentioned, those are the kind of things I would expect to come back in an ordinance to cover Palo Alto, like the flavored tobaccos and those sorts of things. So, that's, that was the intention of the ordinance.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, we've been talking about a fairly narrow issue of small business changing ownership, and I wonder if it could be taken care of by a request to the county to make an amendment to F2, to just-
Councilmember Schmidt, that's what Vice Mayor Scharf said he would be doing to the primary motion if the substitute fails.
Yeah, I would like to ask the county rep whether-
Well, I had asked those, that same kind of question earlier, and our staff had said that they would be able to come back with-
Right, we would work with the county, but I think it's unfair to put Nicole, who's not in their attorney's office, to expect her to respond one way or the other.
And there are multiple departments that are part of the process, so I would need to reengage our team to have that conversation.
So, we'd work with the county. If it could be done, we'll come back and tell you it could be done. If it can't be done, we would come back and let you know that.
The only other thing about Councilwoman Holman's request that I have to point out is, we don't have resources to-
Phil, be patient, I was going to do that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You get the message. I mean, first of all, the ordinance isn't even exactly clear, sorry to be like this, about what's the sequence of the outreach and figuring out what to do. But, secondly, from that, this has been a stretch to even respond on this initiative as it is. The whole reason for going with the county is they do this. They have the capacity, they have the ordinance for us to go through this process, which could, I mean, this level of engagement could generate all sorts of different alternatives, and there is a proven approach. And then, even if we were to develop something, doesn't mean that the county, even if we had the capacity to do that, which we don't, that doesn't mean the county would be able to enforce an ordinance that we craft in our own way. I mean, we'd make this really complicated, and not possible, really.
So, I'm going to support the initial motion with striking F2. I think that's what we heard as a primary objection. I do want to, though, make sure that there's some mechanism for us to be able to look at any unintended consequences or unfair consequences of the full county ordinance. I think it's problematic that we're approving a county ordinance that really wasn't fleshed out by the Policy and Services Committee after kind of two years of work on this. So, there may be other minefields in here, but at least that F2, we would be addressing. Yeah, Councilmember Niss, I've got your light. I just wanted to-
This is in response to the substitute motion. The county's job is health. It isn't our job at the city. It's wonderful to have the county coming forward, and I know how carefully this was vetted, and has been used now for a number of years. I understand the concern, the concern for local retailers and so forth, but at the end of the day, we're talking about tobacco, and what Councilmember Phil Seth just said is true. Tobacco kills people, and it's not just a casual kind of thing that we're talking about. It is a dangerous drug. So, I hope we will go back to the original motion.
Okay, so let's vote on the substitute motion. That fails on a six to two vote, with Councilmembers Wolbach and Holman voting yes. Vice Mayor Scharf, do you have an amendment to the initial motion?
I do. I would direct staff to work with the county to strike F2 from the ordinance.
Okay. And the maker and seconder? Who was, who was the other, were you the?
I was the seconder.
Okay, great, okay. Got it. All right, Councilmember Wolbach.
As a point of process, I'd like to ask the mayor, and/or the maker and the seconder, if it would be possible to vote separately on A and B, and then on C.
All right, we can divide it.
Thank you.
So, let's now vote on A and B?
And I guess D would probably go with those.
Sorry, is there a D? Okay, well, we're just voting, what, D goes with A and B, you're saying?
D goes with C.
D goes with C.
No, it goes A, B.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we're now going to vote on A, B, and D.
Actually, it just changed, so now it's A, B, and C.
Okay, we're now going to vote on the new A, B, and C. And that passes on a six to two vote, with Councilmembers Wolbach and Holman voting no. And now, let's vote on Section D of the motion. Clear, okay. And, Councilmember Holman, are you voting? Okay, that passes unanimously on an eight zero vote, so thank you all very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Quick question. It is 10:30 now. We still have item number 10, East Palo Alto Water Colleagues Memo. We had some discussion about continuing the closed session tonight for, for the 12th. Right now, your agenda looks better on the 12th than it does right now, and I thought there was some sense, as if we got done by 10 or 10:30, we'd look at tonight, otherwise, carry it over to the 12th.
So, let's go ahead and carry over item 1A to the 12th.
Thank you. I'll let the fire chief and the HR director know if they can go on.
Thank you. All right. So, now we will go to item number 10, which is a colleagues' memo regarding addressing the East Palo Alto water shortage. I assume all of you have had an opportunity to read the memo. It basically, at a high level, we've, we've been aware for, at least during this last year, that East Palo Alto is very constrained by a water supply allocation that was given to them back more than 20 years ago. And it basically is an allocation that severely restricts their ability to add housing and even commercial development within a reasonable amount. They have a fraction of the allocation per capita that other cities, including Palo Alto, have within the Hetch-Echey water system. And the makers of the colleagues' memo, and myself, have tried to lay out the, both the significance of this for our neighboring city, the fairness of a reallocation to, for their well-being, and frankly, their, their, their well-being favorably affects our community, and, and the pretty nominal impact on Palo Alto of a reallocation in the neighborhood of a half million GPD gallons per day. So, we, on that note, and in this late hour, we would be happy to respond to any questions from colleagues, and then hear from members of the public. And the direction of the, of the memo is to refer this to the Policy and Services Committee, and-
It's two things.
I'm sorry.
It's either do a study session, or direct it to a committee.
Yeah, that's right. So, the council needs to make a determination whether they would like to refer it to Policy and Services, or a future study session of the council as a whole. So, that would be a determination. So, at this time, we're open to questions, and then we'll hear from members of the public. Councilmember Niss, do you have a question?
A question regarding the water, and I think I sent you a message this morning, Pat. Is there any, is there anything in the arrangement that we have with the PUC, or with Hetch-Echey and so forth, that would preclude us from doing this?
No.
Question answered.
We have some process we have to work through with those bodies, but it's our determination that, you know, that there shouldn't be impediments.
We can give our water away, or sell it.
Yes.
As the colleagues' memo proposes it, that is, you know, allowable under the agreements that we have. We have to go through some process, though, to do it.
Great, thank you. All right, so let's proceed to speakers, and I also see Mayor Donna Rutherford here to speak. You're welcome to speak at the outset, or whenever you like. Welcome, Mayor Rutherford.
Good evening. I had to be here personally. Thank you for the introduction. I appreciate the fact that Mayor Burke and, well, first, let me start off by saying, Honorable Mayor Burke and Vice Mayor Scharf, thank you for having me here this evening. I wanted to personally be here to thank the council for their deliberations on this very important issue that East Palo Alto is having. Certainly, as the mayor said, we do receive the smallest allotment of water on the peninsula, and we've approached the San Francisco PUC in regards to giving us an increase. This has probably never happened before. Who would have thought that we would be in this position? But, we are. But, I think that in our outreach to other communities, to look at their excess amount of water that they have, that if there's any way that we could purchase, because we know that water is a hot commodity, and we're willing to sit down and do some more discussions around it. So, I won't say very much, other than thank you very much for this start, in this very important discussion. And I'm here as a resident first, and as a mayor second. Thank you.
Thank you. So, our next speaker is Peter Dreckmeyer, to be followed by Tess Byther. Welcome. Welcome, former mayor, Dreckmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. Is there a way to show overheads now? Do we, we got rid of that, okay. I feel guilty keeping you all here an extra three minutes. Peter Dreckmeyer, Fulton Street, Palo Alto, and I also work for the Twomey River Trust, so doing a lot of work with water. I grew up in midtown Palo Alto, and one of my best friends commuted to our school from East Palo Alto, and it was almost kind of strange for me that East Palo Alto and Palo Alto weren't the same city. And in fact, they were in a different county, and we knew that, because he had access to Nowr Later's, that delicious candy that wasn't available in Santa Clara County at the time, so he was very popular. And my zip code was 94303, and I remember being very disappointed 10 years ago or so, that a lot of people in the 94303 were upset that they were lumped in with East Palo Alto, which is also 94303, because it made their insurance costs higher, because there was a less advantaged community. And like, why are we- a less advantaged community. And like, why are we the privileged complaining? We should be fighting to make sure that it's equitable across the city and county lines. And I think the biggest injustice, one of them to East Palo Alto, was when the allocation of water was determined in the mid-'80s, and East Palo Alto was just recently incorporated and was represented by the county and really got the short end of the stick. Two million gallons per day for a community that's almost half the size of Palo Alto. We got 17 million gallons per day. And so this is wonderful. I really want to thank Mayor Burke and councilmembers DuBois and Phil Seth and Holman for bringing this forward, and I know, I'll tell you, the community really supports this. I have not heard anyone say this is a bad idea, and I've been talking to a lot of people about this for many years. What I wanted to show you is, I'm sure you can all see this here, but it's really phenomenal what we've done to conserve water in the SFPUC service territory. So San Francisco and 26 communities like Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, 2.6 million people, we reduced our water use 30% in 10 years, and it'll rebound a little bit, but I think people are really aware that it's a finite resource. There's a cap of 265, self-imposed by the SFPUC, and we were, even before the drought kicked in, we were at 225, and last year we were 180, so that's going to rebound. And Bosca, which we're a member of, revisited demand projections for 2040, and Bosca has a cap of 184 MGD, a million gallons per day, and the projections for 2040 are 168. So we're in really good shape. And the last thing I wanted to show you is that, I'm sure you can see this here. This is, it shows current use and allocation and demand projections. Palo Alto, we're looking at 10 MGD, 2040, and East Palo Alto's looking at 3.5. So this is a wonderful thing we can do. It's the right thing, and thank you for, I hope, taking the next step, and I'll leave this just in case there's an opportunity for you to see them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tess Beiler, to be followed by Bill Ross.
Good evening. My name's Tess Beiler. I'm a California hydrogeologist, and I've been talking with the city of East Palo Alto for at least three years now about the possibility of moving forward with such an action, and I just want to say that even though all of my friends are not hydrogeologists, but we live in Palo Alto, and we all support this action. We think it's the right thing to do, and we hope that people will move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Ross, to be followed by Sean Charpentier.
Good evening. I'm a resident and rate pair. If the last five and a half years has taught people like me anything, is that a water reallocation agreement is extremely complex. Assuming that the intent of the colleagues' memo is to permanently transfer a specific amount of the city's share to of water to the city of East Palo Alto to allow the removal of the moratorium on commercial development and particularly on affordable housing, that is a project which is not otherwise exempt under SEQA. So it needs to be assessed properly. What that is, I don't know. If the goal is to link this to affordable housing, I think that is going to be an agreement that has to be reviewed, and I would recommend by outside counsel, because the well-established rule is one legislative body can't bind the exercise of discretion of another legislative body, and I assume what you're seeking is some commitment of affordable housing. I think history has shown that that's been difficult to achieve in East Palo Alto because of an initiative rent control measure. I would historically make reference to the fact that one of the largest losses of the PERS retirement system for real estate investment incurred in East Palo Alto. In any event, I think that agreement has to be in a way that it's not assailable. I would also think that it has to be related back to the Proposition 218 rate-making proceeding that you went through, because there wasn't any indication in that rate-making proceeding of a permanent transfer of water. Finally, for both, you know, and when you say permanent, I think what you're talking about is 30 to 40 years, and spot purchases right now, the going rate is about $600 per acre foot regardless of whether it's spot or contract. I think that has to be integrated and to preserve the structure of the rate-making capacity that you went through here. I hope you understand that these references to process are something that would reinforce what I think the intent of the colleagues' memo is, to make a inter-county, inter-city transfer of water legally sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Charpentier, followed by Carol Lamont.
Good evening. My name is Sean Charpentier. I'm the assistant city manager in East Palo Alto, and I'm here tonight to thank you for the colleagues' memo and mention that we look forward to working with the city of Palo Alto to resolve this issue. We appreciate your interest in it. Just as a little bit of background, the city in the last 10 years, the city of East Palo Alto in the last 10 years has consumed an average of 95% of its SFPUC allocation, and in some years has exceeded it, and as a result of that, the city council adopted a moratorium on new or expanded water connections in July of this year, and that moratorium does have an impact on us. It is precluding us from proceeding with one affordable housing project, a private school project, and two commercial development projects. So it is having a significant impact on us at every level, and we appreciate this and look forward to working with the city of Palo Alto.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Carol Lamont. Welcome.
Hello, mayor and city council members. I'm going to read tonight because I'm a little bit late and I'm tired. I'm speaking to you tonight as a long-term resident of Palo Alto and on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, on whose board I serve. HLC is the only nonprofit organization that is dedicated solely to the production and preservation of quality affordable homes in San Mateo County. Tonight, we urge the city council to approve the transfer of a small portion of Palo Alto's abundant water allocation to East Palo Alto as soon as possible. I have a long history of working to expand the supply of affordable homes, including in East Palo Alto, where I served as co-chair of the Federal Regional Council's East Palo Alto Task Force, to bring federal funding and expertise to this community, which was recognized by all federal agencies in the region as one of the two poorest communities in the Bay Area. I also worked in philanthropy for years, investing in solutions to housing needs, and I worked for the city of East Palo Alto to help stabilize and prevent the displacement of residents. In 1998, when I first came to work in East Palo Alto as a community builder for HUD during Bill Clinton's tenure, I came to see the remarkable determination and resilience of the community. I also came to recognize the many hardships imposed on this community by surrounding cities. On my first day as a community builder in East Palo Alto, a resident gave me a tour, and the first thing he showed me was how the creek that separates San Mateo and Santa Clara County had been rerouted to expand the land within Palo Alto's borders to accommodate the golf course and expand land for office and industrial use that significantly expanded Palo Alto's tax base while shrinking the land an opportunity for what was then unincorporated East Palo Alto. Throughout the Bay Area, people are struggling to afford a home, but the situation is particularly acute in the peninsula, and it is growing worse. In the last three years, for every 26 jobs that have been created, only one home has been built. This huge disparity has impacts throughout and beyond our subregion. Local workers who are unable to find housing options in our communities are forced to commute long distances, worsening commutes. The housing crisis is a preventable human tragedy that is caused by cities like Palo Alto that are developing more jobs than housing units. East Palo Alto has .23 jobs per employed resident, while Palo Alto has 3.02 jobs per employed resident. Palo Alto's draft general plan purposely and willfully plans for continuation of the severe jobs-housing imbalance. Almost 40% of East Palo Alto's homes are made affordable to residents via rent control or housing assistance for both rental and ownership housing. East Palo Alto has approximately 22% of the emergency shelter beds in San Mateo County, but only 3.2% of the population. The housing in East Palo Alto essentially subsidizes all the jobs in Silicon Valley. Still, East Palo Alto's goal is to accommodate more affordable homes and is seeking a modest transfer of water allocation from Palo Alto to accomplish this and to stabilize the community's future. Typically, what is needed to build affordable homes is money, land, and political approvals, but in East Palo Alto's case, the biggest need to meet its goal for housing is more water. East Palo Alto provides housing for many Palo Alto and Stanford employees, and it bears much of the traffic burden from commuters traveling from the East Bay to their jobs in Palo Alto. Transferring a small percentage of the water allocation to enable East Palo Alto to build much-needed affordable homes is an important way to mitigate the impact Palo Alto's job growth has while helping this neighboring, lower-income community build a better future. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now return to the council. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I enthusiastically support the recommendation to go to the Policy and Services Committee with this and take a look at it. I just have a question about what we are transferring from. Palo Alto has three different numbers that it's using with the SFPUC. It has its individual supply guarantee of 19.1,000 acre-feet per year that is permanent in nature, but in 2010, they agreed to an interim supply allocation of 16.4 acre-feet under the improvements to Hetch Hetchy. That will expire in 2018, but in 2013, 2014, they came up with a two-tiered drought allocation, which granted Palo Alto 11.4 acre-feet.
Okay, well, let's let the staff at this hour, let's just get to answering the question.
So...
So, yeah, let's see if we can answer the question or we should, since we are just referring it to another...
I think the question is something for the Policy and Services to look at.
No, I think we can just...
I think it's very basic. It's a portion of the permanent individual supply guarantee.
That's the proposal before us.
From the 19.1 acre-feet.
That's correct. Well, I'm not sure about the acre-feet total, but that said, it is the provision of the individual supply guarantee that is enabled under our agreement with SFPUC, a permanent transfer.
Okay, yeah, that's a no-brainer.
So we were able to clarify that. Thank you. Councilmember DuBois.
Yes, just real quick, I think this is the right thing to do. I think we got a lot of letters in favor of the concept, and the memo's really just asking for discussion without prescribing a solution. I think one thing we might want to discuss with East Palo Alto is maybe the idea of less groundwater pumping in exchange for some of this water allocation. We share an aquifer. I think we're concerned about sea level rise and saltwater intrusion. Another point I wanted to make, because we talk about jobs-housing balance a lot, and really is a regional measure, and we're surrounded by a lot of housing-rich communities, and so enabling more housing to be built in East Palo Alto makes sense for all of us, I think. And then finally, the last point is, there are other cities that have excess allocations, and so hopefully, cities like Mountain View and others will follow suit, and we won't be the only water transfer for East Palo Alto.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Yes, I also enthusiastically support this, and I am a little concerned about the timing. I mean, I heard that, you know, East Palo Alto has a moratorium. I think they need us to move fairly quickly. That's not something we're known for. So I guess I wanted us to think through a little bit the process. I think it's fine if we send it to one of the committees, but it would be nice if we came back to council fairly quickly after that. I don't want it to languish. I think, I've been thinking a little bit, typically, something like this actually wouldn't go to Policy and Services. This is more of a utilities issue. All of utilities issues goes to finance. We obviously could send it to Policy and Services, but in terms of understanding water and understanding all of those issues, those always come to finance. So I think that's something we should think about. The other thing we can think about is, is that the, well, the other thing I think that's really incumbent upon staff is, I assume there's a lot of complicated issues, both legal and technical, in doing this, and so the real trick to this is being able to get the staff work all put together and the questions answered, and then getting to Policy and Services, and then getting to council, and I guess I wanted to get a sense from staff whether or not that's the best route, or is the best route to go, instead of going to a committee, to come to council either actually as a study session or possibly for action for some directions, because I assume it could even be a two-step process. Not all the questions will be answered. So I don't know. I think what's, I'm looking at what's the most efficient process that staff might want to use on this.
Can I jump in? Give it a try. So, I think that the technical and legal issues we have to work through are, in one sense, are uncomplicated in that, I mean, we're just going to have to work through those. I think the variable is, are any of the additional sort of policy considerations that the council needs to weigh in on? The issue, for example, of are there some potential assurances as it relates to not having to use groundwater as much because of this supply? You know, are there other goals that you would like to be able to talk about, those sorts of things? I don't see any of those things really having a bearing on the mechanics of how we have to kind of craft an agreement. It's more to get the direction so that East Palo Alto would know what the terms would be, and we would roughly know what the terms would be. Now, I think we could do the analytical work on the technical and legal issues in parallel with those discussions, and in many respects, I would assume that if the council gives us a directive here, we could start doing that work now. Do you know what I mean? As staff, even beforehand, and be prepared for the policy discussion that you would want to have. The only other thing I would throw out there, I don't know if there's an issue with the UAC or if there's after the council has settled on anything, whether you think there's a need for it or whether the sort of urgency potentially of the time is that we want to keep this just at the council, and you may want to clarify that.
So from, I'm gathering that then staff has no thoughts as to whether or not they'd rather send it to a committee and then come back to council, or they'd rather have a study session, or if they'd rather have basically a study session with some action on some limited policy issues, or what you think would be the most.
I think the council would be in a better position to tell us what you would think would be the shortest route.
Thanks.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, obviously, I'm in support of this and glad that this can happen. Some of us were, I think a lot of people have been interested in this for a good long while. Last year, there seemed to be roadblocks to be able to doing this. Not wanting by any means to dictate to somebody else what they can do, but I think it would be helpful because it is an agreement and an arrangement with another community to know what the priorities are. I know there's been this affordable housing project ready to go, just haven't had the water. Councilmember DuBois mentioned groundwater pumping and limiting that. It would be interesting to know also what kind of development you are looking at in terms of commercial, what kind of commercial, retail versus general office or whatever. It'd be just interesting to know what, and helpful to know as this becomes a more public dialogue, what the priorities are. So happy to support this.
Okay. Councilmember Schmidt, do you have a second brief?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the clarification that the two-tier drought allocation of 11.4,000 acre-feet... acre feet is what the SFPUC can provide based on the ISG. So you have to provide not just RISG, but what the SFPUC can provide based upon that number.
So, I mean, you know, there's this, this thing gets sliced and diced in a lot of different ways. There'll be new agreements that are going to be coming up, you know, as it relates to some of the drought conditions and a lot of unknowns. We'll be, we'll be in a position to talk through all of those at the committee or whatever level with the council.
Councilmember Wobak.
Yeah, also, be looking forward to supporting this. I would say that, from my own perspective, I don't think it's appropriate to, to place any conditions on the water allocation. I think there's a clear disparity, and it's frankly an injustice, and I think we need to do our part, and if there's an opportunity to have other cities join us in that without preconditions or strings attached, so that East Palo Alto can, you know, have all the same opportunities that we do, I think that that's appropriate.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, I just basically wanted to echo that. I think we ought to resist the temptation to try to microengineer this too much. I mean, the, the bottom line is, we got it and we're not using it. They need it, so we should just do this, right? And that's.
And I'll just add a couple additional comments. East Palo Alto is now a partner in our Joint Recycle Water Committee with the, through the Santa Clara Valley Water District, because East Palo Alto is one of our partner agencies in our water quality control plant. And within that, that study is, is one where we're looking more deeply at our groundwater aquifer. So I think that the entire notion of, of understanding our aquifer and collaboration on that is, is something that we're, we're all working together on. And I also want to just emphasize something that's laid out in the memo, which is that for the benefit of the community's understanding, when we had our drought restrictions, they weren't because SFPUC and the Hetch-Hetchy system lacked water. It was a statewide mandate by the governor that affected all jurisdictions and water agencies in the state. It so happens that the Hetch-Hetchy system, part of the, reason that we've, are in as good a shape as we are in a drought, is that now, almost 20 years ago, Hetch-Hetchy, after the previous drought, stopped pumping water for purposes of generating cheap hydro during the drought. And as a result, the water storage capacity for drinking water and other potable water usage for the, all of us in the Hetch-Hetchy system improved. And so that's why Hetch-Hetchy withstood this, you know, 500-year drought in better shape than almost any other water system in the state, and we're now back up at, at a fairly high portion of its total capacity. So I think that's one area of concern that the community might have without understanding that, that it wasn't through our regional agency that the drought restriction occurred, and it would be a very nominal impact on us from the drought. And I concur with what a number of speakers have, have said, and my colleagues have said. A lot of our community doesn't know the long history of our neighbor and, and our colleagues in East Palo Alto, where there have been a number of unfairness, unfair and unjust zoning and, and other actions over many decades. And this is a modest way in which we can help correct one of those. And so I, I want to lend my support to the initiative and thank my colleagues for their support, and I think we can vote on the board.
Is there a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't have the motion yet. Okay. All right. Vice Mayor Sharpe.
So I'll move that we support this colleague's memo and refer to finance.
I'll second that. Okay. Second by Councilmember Niss. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just again, thank you to everyone for bringing this forward and for, you know, the unanimous support. I also haven't seen anyone oppose it. It's, it's the right thing to do, and I'm really glad we're getting the opportunity to move forward on this.
Okay. Councilmember Niss?
Amen.
All right. Now we can vote.
Just a quick comment, just so that it's clear out there, I just want to let the council know that for several months, we've been working closely at the staff level, myself with the city manager and the city manager's staff in East Palo Alto, so we're happy to see you have, take your action on this. Thanks.
Great. All right, now let's vote. And that passes unanimously on an eight-zero vote. And thank you all for joining us, and we look forward to collaborating on this. All right. We now have our wrap-up items of intergovernmental legislative affairs. I'm not aware of any items there. So councilmember, comments, questions, and announcements. Councilmember Holman.
Just a couple. A number of us, I think, Councilmember DuBois, Mayor Burt, I think Councilmember Wobak came as well, to the fifth annual pisada at Buena Vista Mobile Home Park Saturday evening. It was very well-attended and transformative, as it is each year of the, of the park, and just great dancing, food, camaraderie, just a great event. Also, this Thursday, from four to six, there is a tour of the Squier House on University Avenue, and you must reserve a ticket. It is a simple, simple email address. It's squireshowspaloalto@gmail.com. And this is a rare opportunity and may be the last one. They're required to have an open house, supposedly annually, but it hasn't been happening because of the Mills Act. Squireshowspaloalto@gmail.com, from four to six. S-Q-U-I-R-E-H-O-U-S-E, one word. Palo Alto also, it's all one word. Again, it's December 8, four to six.
Okay. Councilmember Niss?
Quickly, there is currently a display in the Rinconada Library, the old main library, and it is a display called A Life, A Day in the Life of a Recovery. And it tells the stories of real people who have been diagnosed with a mental illness or a substance use disorder and so forth. And this is a result of a day-long program that was held by Momentum, who was headed up by David Mineta. So the display looks like this, if you were to see it. And I have been working with Beth, and I will also work with the mayor to see if we could find some day to have a small reception there so that this can be acknowledged. But it's, it's very impressive. It is already hanging at the library, so you could go by and, and take a look at it.
Thank you. And that note, the meeting's adjourned.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing. Just a reminder, this Wednesday, 12, the 7th, the council town hall will be held at College Terrace Neighborhood at the Escondido School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thanks.
Great.